Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education Regular Meeting, Wednesday, June 26. Are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Carolyn.
Here.
You what? Herzog.
Here.
Hess.
Here.
Selagi.
Here.
Right.
Here.
We're formed.
Thank you. And if you'd all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Dr. Davis, could you please read the Land Acknowledgement?
Yes, as we gather today, we'd like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Ho'chuk Nation and the Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present, and we welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you very much. Board President's Report. Oh, sorry.
Approval of Agenda.
And I even had it circled. Approval of Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, we have to do roll call. Turn.
Wright and Herzog?
Yes.
Herzog.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Lyman.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Thank you. Board President's Report. Retirement Recognition. We have two retirees at this meeting. The first one is Karen Mason, art teacher at Phil Phillips Middle School. She's been with the district since 2017. And the second one is Linda Stein, grade one teacher at Menominee Elementary, and she's been with the district since 1989. Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. I know you're a mind reader.
I am.
Wyman, I appreciate that. So I just want to take an opportunity to thank these two individuals for their contributions to the growth of our students and the impact they've had on the family and families and community, who they've served so well. On a personal note, when I was a Central Office Administrator, I loved going over to all of our schools, but in particular, going to Merrill Elementary and into Mrs. Stein's classroom. Her first grade classroom overlooked Kentucky Street and was more or less adjacent to the office. And I always liked the displays that she had in the little area next to her classroom door, very creative and a very caring teacher. So thank Linda, as well as Karen, for their years of tireless service to our students and their families, and wish them a long, healthy and happy retirement.
Thank you very much. Anyone else with retirees? Thank you. We wish them well. I wanted to let you know about a speaking opportunity I had at Badger Girls. Badger Girls is a weekly, five-day event that is hosted by the American Legion. It's hosted at Grunhagen in Oshkosh. There are girls from across the state that come, and every day they focus on a new type of government. So it's very interesting for them. They get great experiences, a great networking with a lot of students, and they get to meet a lot of people in state government. And these are girls that are interested in state government and being advocates in our state. I got to speak on the school board, and I had 45 minutes to speak, and they had great questions, a lot around book banning and questions about their individual districts. Some come from very, very tiny districts and have different concerns than those that come from very large districts. So it was very informative for me, and I hope it was informative for them as well to hear all of the questions that everyone answered. So I just wanted you to know that Badger Girls is a pretty cool event, and we're lucky to host it in Oshkosh. Thank you very much. And next, this is the saddest part, recognition of departed board member Liz Selagi. Liz.
Thanks.
We recognize Ms. Selagi and commend her for her contributions to the Oshkosh Area School District as a member of its Board of Education. Liz joined our board in April 2019, bringing a passion for education rooted in her experience as a former teacher. Throughout her tenure, she has been an unwavering advocate for students and educators. Her steadfast commitment to our guiding principles of Students First has kept us anchored to what truly matters, consistently reminding us to view our decisions through the lens of those in the classroom. During her service, Liz has worn many hats, demonstrating her dedication. She has served as Board Treasurer two years, Board Clerk one year, Policy and Governance Chair one year, and Member two years, Education Committee Chair two-plus years, and Vice Chair two years. Legislative Committee Member one year, Facilities and Finance Vice Chair one year, Administrative Compensation Committee Chair one year, and Vice Chair two months. Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee two years, OPA Meet and Confere Liaison Team two years, and Alternate one year. OEA Meet and Confere Liaison Team one year, and NTA Meet and Confere Liaison Team Alternate two months. Liz's practical, on-the-ground perspective has been invaluable in our deliberations, ensuring we never lose sight of the real-world impact on our policies. Her commitment to self-education on the complexities of board service has been inspiring and has significantly enhanced our board's effectiveness. Throughout her tenure, Liz has exemplified dignity and respect in all of her interactions from fellow board members and administrators to teachers, staff, families, students, and community members. Her thoughtful approach to decision-making and leadership has fostered an environment of mutual respect and collaborative problem-solving, elevating our district's overall effectiveness. Liz's exceptional response to constituents has been the hallmark of her service. Her keen ability to listen attentively to community and staff feedback and skillfully synthesize diverse perspectives has ensured that all voices are not just heard, but genuinely integrated into the board's actions. Her legacy is one of bridge-building and inclusive governance. Liz's talent for finding common ground among differing viewpoints has led to solutions that address complex issues while respecting all stakeholders' concerns. This balanced leadership has been crucial in navigating challenging periods and fostering unity within our community. Liz. While your presence on this board will be deeply missed, the impact of your work will continue to benefit our students, families, staff, and community for years to come. On behalf of the entire Oshkosh Area School District and community, we extend a heartfelt gratitude for your years of dedicated service. Your commitment has touched countless lives and shaped the future education in Oshkosh. We wish you well in all of your future endeavors. Thank you. We're gonna take a picture, alright? For you, you. Liz.
Thank you, Liz.
I first became acquainted with Liz when I was getting interested in the school board, and I had to come and listen and speak on different things. And Liz was always here, this is before she was a school board member, learning and sitting in the audience, just soaking up everything that she could to see if it was something that was a good fit for her.
With a kid or two?
Yes.
Usually are three or four.
Will we ever forget Luis at the convention? This is great. Thank you very much.
You'll be missed. Thank you for everything.
Yeah, Liz, thank you. You really made a big difference.
Aw, thank you. And I'll take just a minute. I was just, I won't say much, but it really has been an honor and a privilege to serve the Oshkosh community. I have a deep love for public education, for the educators, for staff, for students, and my children. In the time that I've been here, I've had amazing educators. Some of them are in this room. Get emotional if I think about it so much. I have worked in different districts. I've interned in different districts. I've student-taught in different districts. I've been a student myself in different districts. And when I say I really believe that the Oshkosh Area School District is one of the best, I really, really mean that. The people here and the opportunity to care for students are just phenomenal, and I'm excited about what's left ahead. Two of the things I was the most excited about were the literacy curriculum changes and the long-range facilities plan, specifically Phase II. And so it's hard to leave when those are, you know, coming up, but I really believe we are on the right path for continued greatness, and I just really appreciate these words. Always a goal of mine to listen to others and to cooperate, and so I feel honored that that was noticed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Superintendent's Report.
Okay, Superintendent's Good News Report for tonight. First of all, we have high school students enrolled in human health issues summer courses. Recently practiced their life-saving CPR techniques at Oshkosh North High School. Students learned about the signs of cardiac emergencies and how to respond in emergency situations. Along with the community first aid and CPR training, students participating in health courses learn about personal behaviors, especially risk-taking behaviors, and up-to-date information to help make them critically, help them make long-term, critical, lifelong decisions. Sorry about that. Jeez, get that out. Alright, summertime means that Brewing Futures Cafe is busy serving our community. The student-run mobile cafe recently made their visit to our administration building, and I had a chance to participate in that, thankfully. As part of our work experience, our students are tasked with developing event menus, and for this visit, they had a featured drink called the OASD Oasis. The students working on the truck gave everyone a great start to their workday with their outstanding service. You can visit our website to find the truck's summer appearances all over Oshkosh and the Fox Valley on our website. So thanks for all the students and staff that are helping support that continued opportunity in our community. Oshkosh West High School had a number of track and field athletes qualify for the WIA State Track and Field Meet earlier this month. Want to extend a special congratulations to Sydney Nelson on being the WIAA Girls Division One State Champion in the 100 hurdles. So congratulations, Sydney. Congratulations also to the Oshkosh West Boys Tennis Team, who finished as the sectional runner-up this year. Three student athletes qualified for the WIAA Boys Tennis Individual Meet earlier this month in number-one singles and number-one doubles. So congratulations, gentlemen, on that. There's nothing like, nothing quite like sitting by the fire with a good book in hand. A few of our young campers recently enjoyed some campsite reading time during our Getting Ready for First Grade Summer School course at Oak Lawn Elementary School. In this course, students enjoy the summer camp feel setting, full of engaging experiences, to help them develop skills in such areas such as reading, writing, speaking, math skills, social-emotional health, to ease the transition into first grade. The spirit of summer fun is alive and well at this awesome, learning-focused campground. Phil Phillips is continuing to join together as a school community over the summer months. The school recently hosted their first Mission 4.0 Open Gym. The event theme was Tell Your Own Story, Be the Best Representation of Yourself, Be the Kid Other Kids Want on Their Team and in Their School Community. From pizza to pick-up basketball to volleyball games, to community building, and catching up with friends and teaching staff, the event brought smiles to many. So thanks for everyone who participated in that. And then finally, just some of the places I've been able to engage in over the last couple of weeks. So, and that concludes the Superintendent's Good News Report for tonight.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the verbal report from June 12th, Board Listening Session, Mrs. Conrad Peters.
Three community members spoke at the last listening session with concerns ranging from teacher diversity and student voice to discipline policies and safety protocols. A suggestion for a student-centered mural at Phil Phillips was given for the Jackson Street-facing side of the school. The positive impact of the mural at Reed Elementary School was also highlighted. For follow-up, there was robust back-and-forth discussion between community members, board members, and administrative staff, which was positive, and many of the questions were able to be answered right there during the listening session.
Okay. Thank you very much. Student involvement in activities, Mrs. Kifmeier.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So overall, just some key communication about student activities. One of our KPIs is to increase student involvement and have student involvement in our high schools. And so our high schools involved in more or more activities for the '23-'24 school year was a little, close to 47 percent, 46.84 percent for all high school students. There was a steady rise in participation from the fall to the spring, about 10 percent increase, which is what we want to see. So overall, about 50 percent of our kids are involved in something outside of just the classroom work and stuff for high school. We still have a disproportionality between our subgroups, and we're going to continue to focus on moving that forward by closing those gaps. One of the key things that I think we've talked about a couple times, but just that in high school, not everyone necessarily is looking for athletics, and sometimes that's what we think about with extracurriculars. But the key for a high school is there's a really easy way to start any club, any organization, any interest that they have. All they have to do is work with their athletic directors and find an advisor, and they can create that club or organization that they want to do. And so that has increased. We have a wide range of activities, all the way from jazz band to FFA, National Honor Society, BSU, or Black Student Union. And again, there's fly fishing. There's like so many activities that our kids didn't do, and if there isn't something that they like, they can easily start that, which is awesome to see. We had, our white students participated at a higher rate than our non-white students. The gap from the winter to the spring in terms of participation by race actually widened by a little over two and a half percent. And so that's really a big focus area, is to try to close that gap for us. And our non-social-economically disadvantaged students participated at a higher rate than our socially-economic students did, disadvantaged students. And again, that's our focus. And our largest gap area was our English-language learners. We're still struggling to get participation with that, so a focus area is for that as well. One of the key things that we are looking at is meeting with our athletic directors, our principals, and our club advisors over the summer to come up with ideas on how we can close those gaps. One thing we're hoping with our socially-economically disadvantaged students is by the change in our fee structure, by reducing that, and not having to worry about family caps and things like that. We're hoping that's going to help a little bit. And then we need to seek information from our students to say, what else do you need in order to get involved? Questions?
Thank you. Just, I'll start with an observation. When you presented to us for the first time this year, which I think was after the fall sports season.
Yep.
You had projected that the numbers would increase in participation to the spring, and that has been borne out. I'm wondering, with the report that Mr. Anthony Miller Jr. had given to us earlier with, I think, 39 goals or something close to that. How you see your work and the work that he has set out with those goals coming together to better serve the free and reduced lunch, the students with disabilities, and so on?
So in, he owns that KPI per se, but we're all layers underneath that, and so my layer would be supporting our principals and our athletic directors to get ideas to bring to our students, and then for our students to bring to our principal and athletic directors to help move the KPI for our equity work as well.
That's great, because I know from working with the State Music Association, when they talk about engagement, it's not only diversity, equity, inclusion, but it's also a sense of belonging.
Correct.
And when students have a sense of belonging at any age in the schools.
Correct.
We have a greater chance of helping to ensure their success. So thank you for the work you're doing.
Thanks.
One quick question for you. When you say fall to spring, I see a 10 percent increase. When you look at the fall, is that 10 percent of the students are participating during that timeframe? And then when you look at the spring, is that 10 percent of the students are participating in that timeframe? And not that 10 percent of the students in the spring have participated in one thing? Because if, for example, somebody were a softball player and they're a one-sport person, maybe they're not participating, and so that's the 10 percent increase that was.
Correct.
So I was curious.
Yeah, so one of the things that we've come across is the way we're actually gathering our data to report out our data in terms of who's involved in extracurriculars. It runs through our IC database, and so there's not a way to be able to see if it's only a spring sport necessarily, or a club, or an activity. So we know that there was about 38 percent in the fall, and so throughout the school year, 10 percent of kids added an activity or a sport or a club between there. So we're actually working with one of our database people to see if we can track this in a better way to get better data. Does that help?
Yep, thank you.
Do other districts have this data available? Like, do we know that? Because to me, I look at it, and 47 percent of all high schoolers are participating in some sort of extracurricular activity. To me, that seems pretty good. I mean, that's one out of two kids that aren't just going to school. You know, they're either playing sports, or they're involved in a club. But that, it piques my interest to see how that stacks up.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, are we way above other districts in that area, or, I don't know? That's just my thought.
I can definitely look into that and get back to the board on that. I don't have that data, like, at my fingertips.
That's a good percentage, you know? I mean, there's work to do, there always is, but, especially when that correlates with things such as achievement and, you know, positive things. So, thanks for the report.
I was just thinking that maybe this would be a good topic for our student representatives, how they go out and gather information. It would raise awareness for all students, so just throwing that one out there.
I love it. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you for your report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Student Attendance Quarterly Report, Mr. Kemmer. No?
Staff Engagement.
I'm sorry.
Sabrina.
Staff Engagement. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, I'll be giving an update on our latest employee engagement survey results. So as you know, the Gallup survey is offered twice a year, once in the fall or once in October to give us a baseline, and then again in the spring or May to let us know if what action steps and items we put into place are giving us the results that we're hoping for throughout the school year. Administrators use the survey results to develop action plans tailored to improving their two lowest-scoring Q12 questions. So as of our most recent survey in May, 48 percent of our employees reported being engaged, compared to the national average of 30 percent, and this is actually up 1 percent from our fall survey. 45 percent reported not being engaged. This is down 1 percent from our fall survey. And then lastly, 8 percent reported being actively disengaged, and there was no change to this percentage from fall to spring. So in your staff report, you saw information all the way back to early 2021. In looking from fall 2021 to our most recent survey in May, our engaged employees increased from 28 percent to 48 percent, and our actively disengaged reduced from 19 percent to 8 percent. One thing I'd like to report out or to point out is that our May survey saw a record number of respondents. So we had 1,173 compared to the previous survey at 989. And we're really excited about this because this was actually a district action plan. We saw that our respondent numbers were down comparatively to our employee numbers. So what we asked is all of our administrators to allocate time during the already scheduled Professional Development Day to allow for all of the employees to participate in the Short-term district goal is that we'd like these numbers to increase. Our national level is at 30 percent engagement. We're at 48. We'd like those to continue to grow. So we're striving for engagement levels of 50 percent or higher while still keeping our disengaged at or below 6 percent. So ways that we can achieve this is we can, of course, continue to develop those action plans in the schools, also at the district level. As you know, the HR office piloted stay interviews this year. We're going to continue those into the next school year as well. And then, of course, lastly, we're going to continue to collaborate with Ted Nieske, CEO of CISA Six, to dive deeper into outcomes and formulate action plans that will continue to drive our progress with employee engagement.
Questions?
Yes?
I have a question. When the survey was first initiated in January of 2021, there was a section where people could write comments, and they could write comments about anything related to the district. I know this survey mainly focuses at the building level, and yet we have people who travel among or between buildings. In the comments section, may they comment on anything in the district, or is it limited to their school or schools?
They can comment on anything, and the way we do it is we partner the individual to be in their home school. So where their FTE is higher, that's where we place the survey. So they don't receive a multiple for multiple schools.
That makes sense.
Yes.
I appreciate that, and I'm glad to see these numbers on the increase. And I appreciate, too, that you're doing the stay interviews. And it's evident over the last week or so, the number of emails that I and other board members have received, that there is a unity and a sense of belonging to a particular school that has been out there for a long time. We've had competitions in the past over various things, whether it's athletics or health-related, and so I think this bodes well for the district and our efforts to continue to engage our staff and to let them know that they're valued. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And now, let's take this opportunity to listen to Mr. Kemmer and the Student Attendance Quarterly Report.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening. So looking at the student attendance rate, which is our measurement for KPI for attendance, we continued with the trend that we've seen in previous quarterly reports, if you recall, where we've been slightly above the state average. So that continued for our final attendance rate calculation for the school year. We came out at 92.8 percent, which is slightly above the state average attendance rate of 92.4 percent. So in terms of where that falls on our KPI ratings, we just squeaked under the four-star mark, so we're at three stars. It's 93 percent is considered the threshold for four-stars, so we just came in under that. So something to shoot for next year. But when broken down by particular demographic areas, again, for most areas, most groups, we're slightly above the state average, once again. The one area where I think we need to continue to focus is our high school, which is one of the few areas where we fell slightly below state average. One of the other attendance metrics that we look at at the end of each school year is chronic absenteeism, and that's something we can only calculate at the end of the year because that takes into consideration the percentage of students in our district who missed 10 percent or more of school days or their time in school throughout the course of the year. So our chronic absenteeism rate for this school year came, what, at 15.5 percent? The state chronic absenteeism rate for this year hasn't been calculated yet, or at least I couldn't find it. Last year, it was 19.5 for the state, so we're quite a bit under that. And our chronic absenteeism rate for last year for our district was 17.3 percent, so we did improve in that area, which is promising as well. In terms of things that have been happening related to attendance, on April 18th, we had our county-wide truancy meeting, so that's something by state statute we have to do every four years. So as the county seat, you know, being the Oshkosh Area School District, we host that meeting. So we had representatives from all county districts, as well as law enforcement, Department of Human Services staff, anybody who's a stakeholder related to attendance is invited to that meeting, where it's pretty much a discussion around what other districts are doing with their attendance plans, and really just brainstorming on what we can do as a county to improve student attendance. So there were some good takeaways that came from that that we brought back to our District Attendance Matters Committee that led to some action plan for going into next year. And just some of the takeaways from our action plan, we want to reach out to our tech department to see if there are communication apps available that we can utilize to streamline communication for our teachers, make it a little bit easier to reach out to parents when we have students who aren't showing up on a consistent basis just to check in, doing a more thorough data dig related to attendance and identify areas of focus from there. Update our attendance letters. Right now, our attendance letters read as being a bit punitive, so we really want to take a more supportive approach when we send those out to our families, so we're rewriting those. And then we're starting to develop some positive back-to-school messaging around student attendance.
Very good.
teachers, make it a little bit easier to reach out to parents when we have students who aren't showing up on a consistent basis, just to check in, doing a more thorough data dig related to attendance, and identify areas of focus from there. Update our attendance letters. Right now, our attendance letters read as being a bit punitive, so we really want to take a more supportive approach when we send those out to our families. So we're rewriting those. And then, we're starting to develop some positive back-to-school messaging around student attendance.
Very good. Questions? Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. Thank you for your report, first of all. I know from visiting at least North High School, and I'm sure the other schools have it, too, but I know there's been a big push in the schools to increase attendance. And outside the office area, before you get into the science area at North, they've had a big, like bulletin board with a major emphasis on attendance. So, it's clear to a visitor, at least, that that's a priority. One of the things I was wondering about, and I apologize, I didn't call you in advance about this to prepare you. I just ran out of time. I was wondering about, when you talk about absences, are those all absences excused and unexcused?
Yeah. So what do we, and that's especially important when we think about chronic absenteeism, because we have a truancy process that we use as a district for students who consistently show up unexcused. Chronic absenteeism looks at any absence. So it could be excused, it could be unexcused. Really, we're trying to get a better feel for what percentage of our students are missing for whatever reason. So, whether it's excused or unexcused, if they're not here in the seat, they're not learning. So it's important that we know that, either way.
Okay, then my second question, and again, I apologize, I didn't get to in advance of this meeting with that, was, would the, the number of suspensions, days that schools are, students are out for suspensions count into these absences as well?
Yeah, for chronic absenteeism.
Okay, so, then I was trying to tie together some other data that we've been presented with over the year, or years, last couple of years, related to our students of color, where we know that our suspension rates have been higher for that group of students than others. I'm wondering if, again, working with Mr. Anthony Miller, our Director of Community Engagement and Diversity, if we can try to determine if these attendance numbers under H in your report are related at all to suspension numbers, or can those be, can those be divided out somehow, so that we can get to the root causes better, so that we can increase attendance for that group? We also know that their performance on state tests and so on is less than what we'd like. So I'm wondering if that all ties together?
Sure.
The performance on state tests, the higher rates of suspension, and then the actual attendance in school.
So when our, when our suspension absences are removed from the data, does that continue to demonstrate similar trends? We can absolutely look at that. And I work pretty closely with Mr. Miller on a regular basis.
Great.
We frequently look at data and see what we can identify from a trend standpoint, so we can certainly look at that as well.
Thank you very much. And again, I apologize for hitting you up with those questions cold, rather than contacting you in advance.
No problem.
And that will silence my watch, so we don't hear that in. Thank you. Oh, for heaven's sakes. I found my phone. I silenced my watch. It's a technological nightmare tonight. Okay, thank you very, very much. Other reports. Education Committee, Mrs. Solaji.
Yes. So the Education Committee met on Monday, June seventeenth, at seven-thirty a.m. We received an update on the literacy curriculum adoptions. I'm just going to read part of this, because it comes from the literacy statement that was sent out, I believe, in April. And it says, "What matters most in achieving high levels of literacy learning affirms the OASD's sincere commitment to selecting literacy instructional materials and implementing instructional practices that are clearly aligned to the research on reading science. This aligns with national best practice for literacy, to which the district anticipates being held accountable. For more detailed information, you can go on the district's website and read the full literacy statement that was put out. But as a committee, we reviewed that and kind of looked at the process and the reasoning behind." The second thing we talked about, which was the upcoming field test evaluation components for adoption of a new literacy curriculum at the K-5 level. So Dr. Coleman spoke about the CKLA, and I cannot, at the moment, remember what those acronyms are for, but that is the adoption that'll take place during the next school year. There are thirty-nine teachers at the K-2 level that are going to pilot this, or field study it, and there are thirty teachers at the grade three, five level. And we actually had more teachers who volunteered to field study this than we were even able to have do the field study. So we see a lot of excitement from staff doing this, and I think it's important to note that it was team pair. So at each school and grade level where this was taken, all of the teachers at that school grade level are going to field study the curriculum. There will be professional development around the science of reading, which has been focused for the past few years. Some professional development has already taken place, but that will continue to help the staff with the new curriculum. The district will document success stories from teachers and students that can be worked into a media plan. Dr. Coleman shared a document on curriculum evaluation components and the framework that we will use to evaluate CKLA as it is field-tested next school year. And then we also, the final thing we talked about was the middle school co-curricular handbook update, which will go to the policy committee. It just kind of came to us first, but the policy committee will review that and give the final update. And it's just regarding language that stated that a student with an F grade would not be allowed to participate in activities at the middle school level, but we have moved from the A through F grading to the proficiency grading. So I believe the policy committee will take a look at that and update that language, to make sure that our policy aligns with our practice. The next meeting will be August first at seven-thirty, and some of the future agenda items, I don't think that there's one set yet for that meeting, but the Education Committee will continue to follow the literacy changes, and the block scheduling, and math, and all the good work that they have been doing. So, that is my report.
Thank you for your final report.
Yeah.
Facilities and Finance, Dr. Herzog?
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. The Facilities and Finance Committee met on Thursday, June thirteenth at seven-thirty. There were two community members who spoke during the public forum to voice their concerns about the deconstruction of the Merrill School Building. Mr. Nihans gave a report on district supportive playgrounds. He made the recommendation to have the elementary playgrounds under the oversight of the Recreation Department to create a more equitable playground experience, and to provide a minimum standard of equipment, and be sure that all playgrounds are fully accessible to all students. Bid information was shared from the deconstruction of the Merrill Building by Mr. Fox. The recommendation was for the H.M. Brandt bid to be accepted due to the, that being the lowest of the five bids received. The new, a new Lego League coordinator position was proposed by Mr. Helmbricht from the Recreation Department. This would create a First Lego League Coordinator to classify the Wave Student Advisor position, and a possible stipend for the First Lego League Coordinator, the Wave Student Advisor, and the First Lego League, First Lego League Coaches. Mr. Schmidt shared information with us about the Interactive Flat Panels, or IFPs, to be purchased and installed for Reed, Menominee, Lakeside, and Emmeline Cook School. The recommendation was to go with the bid from IT Savvy, due to it being the lowest of the five bids submitted. Classroom audio purchase and installation bid for Reed, Menominee, Lakeside, and Emmeline Cook was submitted by Mr. Schmidt. Three bids were received. The lowest one was not recommended, because there were some unnecessary complications in procurement and installation, and so the recommendation was that IT Savvy would be given the contract, as they were the second lowest bid. And finally, there was a recommendation to purchase a house at 725 South Park Avenue by Mr. Nihans. There was a discussion regarding the upcoming purchase of this property, which will be available in late August 2024. The next meeting date of the Facilities and Finance Committee will be on August eighth at seven-thirty a.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Herzog. Legislative Committee, Mr. Wright?
Thank you. The Legislative Committee met on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, at eight-thirty a.m. We, our agenda included updates from CISA VI, from the CISA VI legislative breakfast. The CISA VI breakfasts are completed for this school year, and will most likely be picked up again in October. Dr. Davis spoke about a document he provided at the last breakfast regarding the following topics: Unique safety needs not currently funded; a list of mental health supports that the district currently has for students and specific services that legislators could fund; open position comparisons for the past five to six years, and how the district is seeing more quality candidates recently, which is a good thing; and how universities can better support more students graduating with a teaching degree; also about how the district is hoping to get to forty-five percent reimbursement for special needs students, as current reimbursement is currently between thirty-four to thirty-five percent. And this will be a platform by October for the next biennium budget. Secondly, we had an update on legislative maps. Everyone probably is aware, or some people are aware, that legislative districts have changed, so everyone here may or may not have a new representative, because they shifted slightly in Oshkosh. Representative Paul Mary's district has shifted a little north, and Representative Sharah has taken over some of the south side of the city. And then District, I think it is eighteen, the State Senate District, now runs from Oshkosh up to Appleton. So, those races have changed a little bit, and we got an update on that. Also, we got an update, update from Dr. Herzog, who spoke about Act Twenty. She gave us a WASB update, or Wisconsin Association of School Boards update, on Act Twenty, which is reading instruction and early literacy, and how reimbursement parameters are still being determined for that act. And on Act One-Ninety-Two, which is early literacy professional development and reading awareness, reading awareness assessments. And the rest of this stuff, I can probably skip, so we have time to get to why everyone's here tonight. So our future meeting agenda, our future, our next meeting will be August twenty-seventh at eight-thirty a.m., in case if anyone is interested in coming to a legislative meeting in summer, before school starts. So that's my report.
Thank you. And finally, Policy and Governance, Mrs. Carolyn?
Saving the best for last, right? Policy, everyone's favorite. I have two reports to give tonight, actually. I don't know how that happened, but the first report is regarding our May twenty-eighth meeting. We've been over a total of nine policies during that meeting, and we have voted on them already. They were presented to our June twelfth meeting, and we have already approved all the changes. Really quickly, some of the policies were care of students, whistle ball protection, curriculum development, costing principles, eight forty-four-two, reporting accidents. So, I'm not going to read all of these policies, because I know these are posted on our website. If you want more detail about the policies we approved, feel free to go there. Our second meeting was on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, just a couple of days ago. And during this meeting, we reviewed middle school and high school co-curricular handbook changes. The main change for the middle school handbook is, since our grading has moved to a proficiency grading scale of one to four, we made sure that the wording in there does not equate a one with an F, and the reason being that if we have a student that does, English isn't their first language, they could easily get a one, but that doesn't mean they're failing. So we wanted to make sure that all students have the opportunity to continue with their sports. The big change in the high school handbook was that we have language now for cut and no-cut activities. And this is because, we want to do this, if an athlete doesn't meet the minimum skill levels, it's important not to put a student in harm's way. So the addition of the language allows for coaches to cut students, if they feel that that will keep them safer. We also added to the high school handbook, three strikes and you're off the team. So that would be a, you would get three chances before you were, three strikes, you're out and off the team. So, and there's a whole process that they will go through to make sure that that is enforced. Then we had a bunch of Title IX policy updates. These policy updates were legally required to be in place by August first. I'd like to give a shout-out to Sabrina Johnson, who has done an amazing job preparing all of these updates for us. Again, Title IX is very complex, and there are a lot of changes. If you are interested in seeing more detail on the Title IX policies, please go to our website. Sabrina also presented some employee handbook updates, and these are the updates to the employee handbook. I don't know how many bullet points there are here, maybe twenty. A lot of them were small changes. Some of them were minor tweaks. I'm trying to pick out the most important ones here. Oh, a personal payout was updated, include food service employees. We also said that sick leave can be used in half-hour increments, incorrectly had, oh yeah, so that was a correction to the existing handbook. A lot of these are just technical changes, and things that needed clarification. So, again, this is on our website, if you want to see all these twenty-five bullet points in detail. The last thing we talked about this week was the Library Media Center's discussion on school library inventories. This had been requested by Ms. Wyman, that we have the ability to see what, what kind of books we have in our libraries. So, if people are saying they want a certain book removed from our library, we would have a way to actually search and see if that book is in fact in our schools. And that timeline for that is maybe August? I don't know. Did we have a timeline for that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be providing, providing the link, just in a more visible space on the website. It already exists right now, but just to make it more present, and then get communications out.
Thank you.
By the time the school year starts.
Yep. Okay, and then our future meeting date is August twenty-seventh. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are moving into the non-agenda-related public forum and the agenda-related public forum. We have forty-five minutes allotted for speaking time, so we will get to it. There is, no one signed up for the non-agenda-related this evening, so we will move to the agenda-related. I'm going to start. We have a procedure in which people can submit their talking points, and we will go through those first. I do not have addresses, Eileen, but these have been, came from Dr. Davis, so I'm assuming that these...
Yeah, we'll follow up and get those.
Thank you. Okay, this is from Abby Getz. Dear Oshkosh School Board members, I'm writing to express my thoughts on the proposed changes regarding the technology integrator positions within our district. My name is Abby Getz, and I currently serve as a technology integrator for three elementary schools in the district. I ask that you carefully consider the potential impact of eliminating these positions on the one thousand two hundred seventy-six staff members across our twenty-two schools. The current ratio of technology integrators to staff members allows for personalized support, and reducing the number of integrators to just two would not be feasible. This change would place a significant burden on our educators and add unnecessary stress in the already demanding environment. Additionally, I urge you to think about the effects of over nine thousand students in the Oshkosh area school district. The district's mission and vision emphasizes innovation, creativity, empowerment, and most importantly, putting students first, but cutting twenty positions, all of which have direct contact with students contradicts these goals. It is essential that we equip our students with the necessary skills to thrive in a technology-driven world, and maintaining adequate support is crucial in achieving this. I encourage you to ask yourself, are we doing this? Oh, you should be timing me. As you deliberate on the future of technology integrator positions, I urge you to prioritize the needs of our educators and students. Your decision tonight holds significant implications, not only for our staff members, but also for the thousands of students who rely on our commitment to innovation and educational support, and in turn, the overall success of our schools. As you weigh these factors, I urge you to prioritize the needs of our educators and students, ensuring that we continue to uphold our mission and prepare our students for a technology-driven future. Sincerely, Abby This is from Terri Schutz, 2865 Prairie Wood. Good evening. Learning that Mrs. Monagle's position could be... Learning that Mrs. Monigal's position could be eliminated next year was a shock to us as parents, but even so, my daughter Lennon. Lennon will be in fourth grade at Oakwood next year. We heard about Mrs. Monigal constantly through the year from her. What Mrs. Monigal has done with the students and teachers is such an integral part of their learning experience, and losing her would be a detriment to our children. Lennon worked with Mrs. Monigal in her third-grade classroom, focusing on projects and scratch supporting not only the teacher, but the entire classroom of students for months. In addition, Lennon joined Girls Who Code, a coding club just for girls, which meets once a week for months. Lennon was so excited to finally be old enough to join this club. She worked hard alongside a huge group of other girls led by Mrs. Monigal, who offered continual guidance, knowledge, and support. When Lennon was frustrated or fell behind, Mrs. Monigal would spend extra time with her at her lunch hour, and was even available to us via email on school breaks. Through the coding club and extra tech support, we saw an expansion of interest and knowledge with Lennon. She was so excited to continue learning, and her confidence soared. I know how much Lennon loved not only Girls Who Code as a club, but Mrs. Monigal as a teacher and mentor through that and in school as well. It would be a huge loss to our school community to lose such an invaluable resource. Thank you. This is from Deb Norton. My name is Deb Norton, and I'm a technology integration specialist and tech coach for Oshkosh North High School. I'm unable to read this letter to you in person, and currently on a flight home from the ISTE Technology Conference, where I was fortunate enough to present on the uses and benefits of AI in education. I truly wish I could be with you in person this evening. I'm writing to urge you to maintain the positions of our six technology integration specialist positions that are being considered for elimination. These roles are critical to our district's continued success in preparing students for an increasingly digital world. In today's educational landscape, technology is not just an add-on, but an essential component of effective teaching and learning. As technology integration specialists in the OSD, we play a critical role in, one, supporting teachers. We provide ongoing professional development and personalized coaching to help Oshkosh educators effectively incorporate technology into their lessons. Two, enhancing student learning. By promoting innovative tech-based teaching strategies, we help engage students and develop crucial 21st century skills. Three, maximizing our technology investments. Our expertise ensures that we get the most value from our invested Learn Without Limits digital tools and platforms. Four, staying current. We keep our district updated on emerging educational technologies and effective practices. Five, ensuring equity. We help bridge the digital divide by supporting students and families with varying levels of tech across access and knowledge. Eliminating these positions would result in decreased teacher confidence and effectiveness with technology use, underutilization of our existing tech resources, widening gaps in digital literacy among our students, increased burden on teachers, staff, and students. The cost of maintaining the six technology integration specialists far outweighs the value we bring to our educational community. Our work directly supports our district mission to support our students to lead creative, empowered lives. I strongly urge you to, I strongly encourage you to preserve these impactful positions. Thank you for your consideration, kindly Deb Norton. This is from Lisa Graff. Hello, board members. In accordance with board policy, this is to be read aloud for me as I cannot attend this meeting, as I'm at a tech conference the district has sent me to in Denver. My name is Lisa Graff, and the 24-25 season would have been my fifth year as a technology integrator. My 20th year in the education world and eighth year at the Oshkosh Area School District. I would like to ask you a series of questions tonight. Will you change our mission and vision statement to reflect a district without adequate educational technology support? Who will coordinate district-wide staff development? Specifically, the immediate need for fall staff choice PD with over 60 tech integration sessions for K-12 staff? Who will support Canvas integration, blueprinting, cross-listing, and setting up Outcops and Rubix? Who will train staff on new devices like smart boards, document Canvas, and coming to elementaries? Who will onboard new staff beyond handing them device with account login info? Who will take on getting all middle school students new devices this year? Who will support AI integration? Who will evaluate new technology tools? In a district our size, a team of three people cannot support staff and students. I can predict you will have a mass exodus of quality veteran teachers over the course of next year, as having to figure out all these pieces are the one that will be the straw that breaks the camel's back. Please do not rubber stamp the executive team's choice to cut an entire department who supports all OSD staff and students. I urge you to do a deep dive into what tech integrators actually do. We are the feet on the ground for every single department initiative. We have direct impact on every single district KPI to a level no other position has. Send the executive team back to the drawing board. Our staff and students will be left to suffer and drown this year in the amount of unknown and extra responsibility they will have without a tech integrator team on top of an already extensive list of responsibilities. Please listen to Amy Monigal's Mission Keeper podcast to hear how important Brian Davis thought our role was mere weeks ago. Final one. Dear, this is from Terri Rosinski. Dear members of the board, tonight you'll be facing some very tough decisions. As a veteran staff member for nearly two decades, I implore you to vote in favor of what's best serves our students. Tonight you will be asked to exchange 20-plus positions for a salary increase. Staff deserve an increase, but they also deserve their coworkers. Without building subs, you will lose precious instructional minutes. Without tech integrators in our buildings, you will risk going backwards in the area of AI and students who constantly consume technology. We need these people. One of the district's KPI focuses on staff engagement. Choosing to cut this many staff last minute after contracts are signed and summer work has begun is disheartening. I am concerned for the direction of our district. These should be well-thought-out decisions, not last-minute notices. Let's stop this, find a way to fund both the positions and the raises, and do what it takes to best serve our students. I'm sorry for sending this letter so close to the meeting, but I'll be unable to attend in person tonight, and I'm hoping to show support for the amazing people we have in the OSD working with our children. I will happily work with you to find ways to save, but this cannot be a way. We need a morale boost not to lose so many positions. Please vote to keep the positions and increase pay. Thank you for your time. First person in person is Christopher Carnes.
Hello, everyone. Christopher Carnes, 1009 Windsor Street, Oshkosh. Maybe take a break from that conversation and what's going to come after me. I'm here to say thank you to Liz.
Aww.
I, there's a lot of, I tried typing up what I wanted to say as a thank you, because it's your last board meeting and what you've been able to be a part of. You have left this community better than when you got here. It's better now than when you started as a board member. My kids are better off because of decisions you have made, and all of us on the board have brought different values and different ideas and different experiences. I always respected yours as much, if not more than any, based on your experience as a teacher, and different backgrounds, and always looked at, to you for guidance or to see through things that I just didn't see that way, because this is not my area of Your vote for Val Phillips for the First Amendment kept it going, and our community cannot say thank you enough for that. Watching you, as Beth mentioned already, pushing Louis V, Louis around at the convention, right, taking him, just showed how much education meant to you to be able to do that and the sacrifices you've made. I wish you all the best, and you deserve everything, and so from myself, I just say thank you.
Thank you.
I have time, so I guess I, I was going to use that, right? I thought that would take longer. Sometimes, as many of you know, we've had difficult conversations, and sometimes it's not as much the outcome as it is having the conversation. And tonight will be about having that conversation to all of you and to everybody in this room for a difficult item, difficult decisions that have to get made. And so I just hope you guys have that conversation, ask real questions, and listen to however many of you behind me get to talk as well. So thank you all for being here. It means, shows how much people care about public education in the city, but, you know, people are here for this moment. So to all of you, thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi.
State your name and address, please.
Yeah, I'm Matt Callahan, 2780 Oakwood Circle, Oshkosh. My name is Matt Callahan. I'm one of the original tech coaches hired at Oshkosh Area School District. I've learned a lot in the last 10 years, and one of the things is to never let a good crisis go to waste, so this seemed like the perfect time to come and talk about the importance of technology integration for our students. Our positions were originally funded from a reduction in the technology budget, as our former tech director, Dr. Gunlock, felt strongly that in order for tech integration to be successful, teachers would need embedded professional development. Years of planning ensued that involved the creation of a district tech team, the hiring of tech coaches, and the passing of not one, but two, community referendums to support the Learning Without Limit initiative. Much has changed in the last 10 years. I found an old YouTube video, and from 10 years ago, it was on how to send an email. We made progress pretty fast through meticulous planning and embedded PD. By 2018, OSD was recognized as a national leader in technology integration. A team of tech coaches presented at a national conference with Dr. Gunlock on AI and how it was going to disrupt society and education. When COVID hit, we were well-prepared with devices and a PD ecosystem. We tried to eat that elephant one bite at a time. We worked with staff on how to use our learning management system Canvas. We learned about coding and robotics and video editing, so we could then go teach those things to staff and students. Students were moving from consuming technology to creating with technology, and that AI thing we talked about has turned out to be kind of a big deal. Our students take standardized tests on computers, and in the future, our students are probably going to be working with AI at their side to complete tasks. Technology isn't going away, and we continually hear reports about how stressed out and overwhelmed the staff are. If we want our students to be college and career-ready, I don't know how we can remove almost all the supports for technology use and say we are putting students first. If we don't invest in technology PD for staff, I don't know how we maximize the millions of dollars the community has invested in technology. Planning has always been our key to success. I'd urge you, board members, to ask questions about what the district's plan is for how we are going to prepare our students for an ever-changing, technology-rich future. I understand budget cuts have to be made, and perhaps we need less tech coaches to right-size our staffing. Like Dr. Gunlock, though, I feel very strongly that our staff need embedded professional development, and eliminating six of the eight positions is going to erase much of the hard work that has been done the last 10 years. We've done a lot of work in the last 10 years, but I still think we have a lot of very important work left to do to get our students to be college and career-ready. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Beth Jeffers. I am at 2024 North Point Street, and I am speaking tonight on behalf of pretty much everyone at Emmeline Cook about a consideration before you tonight, which is eliminating the building sub position at our school. Our overwhelming concern is that you understand how invaluable this position is at E-Cook. First, there is the obvious. When we are in need of a sub, we have one. Our building sub, Meredith Mendon, is able to step into any room for any teacher at a moment's notice. And it's not just that she's available, but it's that she knows all of the students and all of the routines and all of the procedures of our school. Because she is a regular part of our E-Cook family and knows the kids and the way we do things, there is little to no loss of valuable instruction or curriculum when the classroom teacher is away. Having a sub on staff also eliminates the need to ask other staff to step into a room and cover teacher absences. Prior to the creation of this position, our counselor, our behavior interventionist, our math and literacy ISTs were frequently called upon to sub, which then pulls them away from the jobs that they already have. It's also important to note that Meredith does far more than just cover teacher absences at Emmeline Cook. She is a regular part of our recess supervision schedule. She's out at the crosswalk every morning. She manages our guided reading library. And I'm sure that none of these things sound like particularly complicated tasks, but they need to be done by someone. And if Meredith is no longer on staff, then these tasks are going to need to be assigned to people who are already feeling stretched pretty thin. There's a lot of pressure right now on our teaching staff to do something to raise math and literacy test scores. Responsibility is being placed squarely, and I would say solely, on the shoulders of the school staff, and the most impactful resource that we have at our disposal right now is the one thing that you are potentially taking away, and that's our people. We don't need more technology. We don't need more literacy curriculum, and we definitely don't need more PD. We need people, and we need enough people in our building to make sure that we can do all of the things necessary to run a school without taking time away from working with kids. If the district administration and the OSD school board truly value each and every person in the district, and you truly want to set teachers up for success and help all of us do the job of educating children, then you need to give us the number-one resource we need: people. Show us that you really and truly do value us in the work that we do, and please start by voting no to these position cuts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ta Fighter? Is it, did I pronounce the last name correctly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Ta Fighter, 3990 Summer View Drive in Oshkosh. My name is Ta Fighter. I am an Oshkosh resident. I am a mom of two Oshkosh students and a dedicated Oshkosh employee for the past 27 years. I am here to speak to the decision to implement the reduction of staff positions. I consider myself fortunate to work in a district that employs instructional support teachers. It speaks to the belief in teachers as learners. The variety of positions allows me as a classroom teacher to work with a coach to bring new ideas to the table and guide me as I implement new technology and methodology. The absence of a tech coach specifically will be noticed. It will be missed. Although the role of a tech coach is not to solve my smartboard glitches, my Chromebook issues, having a tech coach available as close as a Google Chat away has saved me many times and allowed my teaching to continue as planned. I have also worked with my tech coach to pilot Canvas changes, and multiple times have gone with a, hey, how can I do this idea? And then worked alongside them for backwards design to get new tech into the hands and minds of students. I ask you to reconsider cutting the tech coach positions and allow us to continue to work together in a technology-driven world. In my many years of teaching, technology needs have increased, and unfortunately so have emotional and behavioral needs. I'd also like to ask you to consider not cutting a dean position, a counselor position, and a social worker position. These are crucial roles that serve students in various ways that a classroom teacher is not trained to attend to. In my professional opinion, it's a time to add social workers, counselors, and deans and not eliminate positions like these. I've only mentioned a few of the ways that I am aware that these positions impact our students and staff. I can't imagine the details that others will have to pick up and the lost opportunities we will face if these positions are eliminated. Overall, it's about the students, about the kids. The positions you are considering cutting will impact students, their learning environment, and their social, emotional needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ta.
Amy Monigal, 1219 Geneva Road in Menash, Wisconsin. And who knows but that you have come into your position for a time like this? That's from the Book of Esther, chapter 4, verse 14. And why am I starting this way? Well, I was out biking today, and I got a little lost, so I pulled over at a church, and I dictated the statement I'm reading right now into my phone while I was waiting for my husband to bring me some Gatorade. That passage was one that I leaned on heavily the last time I attended a board meeting, when Smith School was closed in 2019, and I question whether my place is here in the district. It was, and now I'm leaning on this verse once again. Change is inevitable, but the reduction staffing is not well-thought-out, nor is it one that puts students first. I'm Amy Monigal, but I'm also representing Abby Getz, Lisa Graff, Jody Guido, and Blair Drexler, two newly hired tech coaches. This year, my 25th year in the school district. Taught 5th grade for 19 years and was a tech coach for the last five, serving four school communities of over 100 teachers and upwards of 1,000 students. Up until last Friday morning, I was making plans to positively impact the Trager Middle School community. Board members, I would like to propose that perhaps you were placed in your positions for a time like this. You are facing a... You are facing a question of whether we will continue to be a district of destination or a district in decline. You've received many letters laying out questions regarding the future of technology, so I will not use my time to restate those questions, but I will say this: Cutting nearly an entire department without a clear plan is a colossal mistake, and there will be no going back. This year alone, I've been told that we do not work for a building or a principal. We work for the district. We can be moved at any time. I've been referred to as a moving piece, a cog in a machine, somebody who is irreplaceable. Those viewing this meeting, they're watching very closely to see what decision you're going to make. Will it be a decision that truly reflects our KPI of retaining high-quality staff? Should these positions be cut, my colleagues will be wondering, who's next? Our exec team made it clear that there's only one way to adequately compensate our staff: eliminate positions. I reread the board minutes at 3:00 AM last night because I have not been sleeping so well. And on page 54, the board minutes stated that the OASD's allotted budget increases for the 2425 fiscal year did not include provisions for granting a full CPI plus step movement. Our financial department overlooked planning for compensating us? This seems like a huge warning sign. Next year, when negotiations are happening again, what positions will be cut then? Who will be affected, and more importantly, how will our students suffer? My team has been offered positions that have been posted on WeCan for weeks, positions that are maybe not desirable for us. Had this decision been made several months ago, we could have sought positions that more closely match our talents. If the reduction of these 20 staff members truly will impact our KPIs in the district the least, I wonder why so many letters were sent to the board asking you to reconsider this. The loss of the majority of our technology integrators will have far-reaching effects on our schools' teachers and, more importantly, our decisions. Please make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Samantha Benke.
Samantha Benke, 1425 West Third Ave. Good evening. My name is Samantha Benke, and I currently serve as the IST Curriculum Assessment at Vell Phillips Middle School. I am here to express my deep concern over the proposed elimination of the six technology integrators. This decision will undoubtedly have a significant negative impact on our staff and students. Our teachers rely on technology integrators daily for support with Canvas, Google Platforms, Chromebooks, and more. If you spend a single day with any of our tech integrators, you'll see how integral they are to our daily operations in this district. The best analogy I can think of to describe the partnership between myself and my tech coach is that, think of us as dance partners. Each partner has a role in the dance and cannot work without each other. They each have their own expertise but rely on each other to make the dance work. Curriculum ISTs have the knowledge and expertise for grading and instructional practices, and the tech coaches have the expertise to make it happen within the platforms that the OASD spends their funds on. Over the past three years, I, along with Lisa, our tech coach, have on-boarded and continuously supported over 50 new staff members at Vell, helping them implement strong instructional practices. This is on top of us conducting regular coaching cycles, planning and delivering building professional development, and leading content area meetings with our teaching staff. Lisa's role has been indispensable, and I could not have accomplished any of this without her collaboration. Looking ahead, the next two months will involve creating, adjusting, and cross-listing all the Canvas courses for the 2425 school year, a task that falls squarely on our tech ISTs. Canvas does not come plug-and-play. It has been built up by our tech ISTs to meet the needs of our district and our students. Without them, how will we be able to be ready for the start of the school year? The timing of this decision deeply concerns me. Furthermore, in August, we deliver four hours of onboarding during New Teacher Academy, a joint effort between the curriculum ISTs and tech ISTs. Without them, new teachers will struggle to understand and utilize essential tools like Canvas, GoGuardian, ViewSonic boards, and more. Who is going to provide this ongoing training to our teachers? Who is going to be there to support them? The OASD's vision is to be the leader in education through innovation while focusing on the whole child. Eliminating these roles will remove key leaders and innovators from our schools. What message does it send if we're going against our vision? I urge you to reconsider this proposal and recognize the profound negative impact it'll have on our students and teachers, and, sorry, our staff and students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ellen Anderson.
Hello, I'm Ellen Anderson, 1650 Arlington Drive, Oshkosh, Wisconsin. You've seen me before, and so I'm going to digress for one minute away from the resolutions that are here to talk about staffing, but I'm here to support, to talk about resolution number eight. And I want you to rethink and reconsider one last time tearing down historic Merrill School and spending nearly $1 million. I know it's $911,000 and some pennies on demolishing an historic section of the school in order to what? Add a little bit more green space, and I see that there's some rhetoric out there about perhaps putting in a track. And after listening and actually reading the agenda tonight, I thought, is that really the best way to spend $1 million of taxpayer money is to tear that school down and put in more green space and potentially find some funding for a track? When we are desperately trying to find ways to improve the outcomes of our students in the Oshkosh School District? And I'm feeling a disconnect here. How that $1 million gets spent in order to improve students' lives doesn't just balance very well. The resolution indicates that the funding source for this, $911,000, is in referendum funding account number 49. And I'm sure there's an accounting somewhere that lists all the things from the resolution and the referendum from 2020 that dictates how much money is still there. But wouldn't it be something if this board could reverse or at least table and do a deeper dive into how that $911,000 could be better utilized? And maybe, just maybe, this one time, you could consider allowing some developers to come in and take a look about repurposing the historic section of the school. The non-historic sections, okay, let's get a bid and find out how much it takes to tear that down. But we never in this community gave developers a chance to come in and offer some housing options. And wouldn't it be really wonderful if some low-income family-type housing, for which there are huge waiting lists in this city, could be developed right across the street from the new Vell Phillips School? What an amazing partnership opportunity that could be. But, you know, go ahead and spend the $911,000 and demolish the school and put green space there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jennifer-
Rickel.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Rickel, 3091 Rebecca Run. I am here to express my concern about the proposal to cut teachers in order to fund the deficit budget. As a member of our community, as well as a veteran teacher of 27 years in Oshkosh, I believe that our teachers are the backbone of our educational system. And cutting these positions will have a detrimental impact, as we've heard from many, on our students and on our school communities. I'm especially concerned about the elimination of the technology positions. As an IST of myself, I am concerned about the future of my position as well. And as others have said before me, it starts getting you thinking about, you know, the security of our own jobs as well and for our children and our future. How do we, as a district, continue to meet the demands, necessity, and expectations of incorporating engaging technology into our classrooms as it continues to change and evolve when we do not have dedicated positions to help teachers integrate this? How can we uphold the idea that technology integration is important to increase student engagement and learning when we are not showing support for the value of the positions held by those that are meant to help us do just that? I wonder who will take on the district's technology initiatives? The teachers whose positions, oh, I'm sorry, I lost my place. I am concerned that the role of the tech ISTs will become yet another item put upon elementary teachers already very full plates. Who will take on the planning of technology professional development, rolling out new technology and initiatives, working directly with teachers and students to guide and teach technology initiatives in a very hands-on way in the classrooms, and many, many other tasks that our tech ISTs have done to assist with integration of technology in our elementary classrooms? I do not feel that the Oshkosh Area School District has handled this situation well. The teachers whose positions were eliminated were not given fair notice to make decisions that are best for themselves, their families, or for the schools that they have devoted many, many years to. I have spoken to several of these individuals, and they have been given mixed messages from Human Resources regarding positions that are available, if they do or not need to interview for positions, whether seniority is a factor or not, and they were most certainly not given ample time to make such high-impact decisions. This is not acceptable, and I highly urge the board to explore other avenues for reducing the budget deficit. Thank you for your dedication to the children and our community, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sharon Wagner.
My name's Sharon Wagner, 4103 Oregon Street, Oshkosh. I've been a teacher here in Oshkosh Area School District for over 30 years. And I also was raised in Oshkosh, went through all public schools, went away to school and realized, boy, Oshkosh is a really nice place to live. The community put values education, they value the arts, and of course, we have Lake Buena Bagel. I know how important it is to our community members to establish and maintain high expectations within our schools. That being said, I am saddened and disappointed. I'm saddened and disappointed with the way my fellow colleagues are being treated in relation to the termination of particular positions. One colleague of mine, a 5th-grade teacher, nearing the end of her teaching career, was actually encouraged to pursue an instructional support teaching position. She was excited, energized, and preparing to give elementary teachers the support she knew they needed, using technology in the classrooms because she's been in the classroom. This position would have given her a chance to further her impact on teachers and students in regard to the ever-changing technology needs of today's world. My colleague received a phone call stating that a new position was being cut from the district. She was told she could have a media specialist position, a math IST position in two different elementary schools, or a first and her second grade position. Remember, she's a 5th-grade teacher. That's a big jump. Feeling heartbroken to give up her 5th-grade classroom, only to be told the job she was excited about was no longer an option, she decided to take the math IST position. However, due to a clerical or administrative error, we all make mistakes, I get that, she was then informed that because of seniority, the math IST position was actually not available to her. My friend asked for her old job back. She was told that in regard to her job, seniority actually does not play a role. And as a teacher in the district for a long time, I guess I need some clarification on that as well. You know, what, when does it, when doesn't it? She asked for the media specialist job and was told that the requirements for that position were not accurately posted, and she now needed a special license for it. Again, I understand mistakes are made. We all make them. Clerical error or whatever. Had my colleague known that these positions were on the chopping block, she never would have given up her classroom teaching position. I understand that our union has been fighting for cost of living wages for many years. I think our executive team also just received a cost of living raise. I understand the money needs to come from somewhere. We all get that. What I don't understand is the timing and the dissolution of these positions and the way it was handled. I hope you'll consider how you treat and value the teachers, because I think that you normally do. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker this evening is Shirley Robender Maddox.
Good evening. Shirley Robender Maddox, 1313 Jackson Street. As a retired teacher, I'm still doing my minipartists and show and tell because I think it helps tell the story. I'm here about a resolution number eight that she'll be discussing tonight on the demolition of Merrill School, designed by William Oller, phenomenal architect. And the school has been deemed eligible for the National Register in two criteria. Criteria six, for its historic integrity and as an example of architectural architecture, and for criteria A, for its development in the history of education pertaining to junior high school. Back at 4,000, 4,000 years ago, four years ago, Tim Hesse and I filled out the original nomination questionnaire for the Historical Society, and they sent a letter to, at that time, Superintendent Vicki Cartwright and David Gunlock, and they became aware that it's potentially eligible for the National Register. I think the brick, this is a 100-year-old brick. It weighs five pounds. It will be, if you think of all the bricks in Merrill School, demoed. It will be crushed. It represents energy. It represents natural materials, and it will be just lost. We don't have much of a history in this country, so I looked up research. How long does a brick last? 650 years. Or more, because the Roman bricks are still, the buildings still exist. Give it 2,000 years. And buildings built of brick are expected to last 500 years. We can't do the research in this country because we don't have anything that old. This city has very few brick buildings of any substance. Merrill School is one of them downtown.
Shirley, you have 30 seconds.
Pardon?
You have 30 seconds.
30 seconds? All right. The demo company's going to be charged for disposing of the weight of probably a million bricks. They remove, if you look them up, they do snow removal, and they remove warehouses, not fortresses. I'm, I'm aware that companies can go bankrupt when they take on a project in which they cannot afford to carry, finish it off.
Shirley, your time is up.
Time's up. All right.
Closing calls.
I ask you to be wise, because the future will look on past decisions.
Thank you very much.
Reconsider.
Thank you.
No, it was out there until right before. Okay. All right. Okay, next we have the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item as discussed at a previous meeting. It'll be voted on with one vote without discussion. So move.
Second.
Solaji and Ray. Call the rule, please.
Solaji.
Aye.
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 Carolyn.
Aye.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Now we're moving to our individually considered resolutions. Number eight, approval of Merrill Middle and Elementary School deconstruction and site grading contract. Do you have a motion?
So.
Second.
Herzog, right? Discussion.
I've got some questions.
Dr. Hess?
So last week, I saw in our board update that we are looking at putting a track back onto the site. And so I question, I don't know who we got here, Drew or Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Or Julie?
Angela can speak.
I'm curious if we could talk about, given it's a site grading thing and what we're planning on doing there, I saw something about memorialization. Can you talk at all about what the plan is?
So, no matter what the green space was going to look like, or what, no matter what the green space was going to look like or what the plans were for that space, there was, I believe it was $50,000 set aside in earmarked for a memorial corner. The purpose behind that was to make sure that with Schumer Field becoming the now site of Vell Phillips Middle School, that we were honoring that piece and also the historic part of the gates that were there. So in that memorial corner, we have planned to recognize Merrill, Merrill School, Merrill Middle School, Oshkosh High School. There is a memorial tree and a memorial plaque there, along with honoring Schumer Field. And so that has been the plan for a memorial corner, no matter what was going to be placed in that green space.
Part of those plans, if, I'll add to what was just said, is the old field had two brick pillars with capstone and a plaque in those. We were able to save those, and those are going to be part of that corner as well.
Good. You know, I appreciate that. I think I brought up at Facilities and Finance Committee that, one, I think at the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting, we heard, and I think it is brought up in front of this Board before, the concept of potentially saving that door number three. And I do believe that you could take that and move it over to that particular site and retain some elements. I appreciate the saving some elements of Schumer Field and the pillar, that's great. I believe when Mr. Fox presented this, he suggested that this might start, I thought it was like August twentieth, something like that, was when the demolition would actually start, somewhere like between August twentieth and November, if I recall.
Correct. Yep.
And I think what I had said at Facilities and Finance is, we had thirteen hundred people sign a petition saying that they wanted to preserve this school, and that means something. And I would also suggest that our referendum that is coming up, we're proposing to knock down South Park School, too. And that, too, was designed by Henry Oller, it has the same art deco features. And so, I would really hope for us to try to find a way to memorialize that building a little better. And I would hope that, you know, our actions say one thing, but our inactions say something else. And I would say, we've got roughly two months to figure out, before it actually starts coming down, before we take all those bricks to the landfill, is there a way to maybe save part of that door and put that in that section there as kind of a landscaped, but preserve some of that building, something. Now, maybe it can't happen, but I feel like we could work with some of the community members that are interested in doing this and maybe see, is there something more that we can preserve from that? I appreciate that we said fifty thousand dollars, maybe it doesn't fall within that, maybe we could go out and raise some funds to make that happen. But I appreciate that you could look at that building right now and say, all the elements of that are right in the middle of the track, and if we're putting a track there, you can't. But you could replicate that exact same thing and preserve some elements of it. And I feel like if we do that, maybe at least we're not going to have thirteen hundred people that signed that petition say absolutely no to that referendum. Now, maybe it can't happen, but I think we should at least consider moving forward with evaluating that, is my recommendation.
Yeah.
You know I'm voting no on this. I get it, but, but I appreciate your answers, and I hope we could do something a little more to preserve this, so.
Yeah, that's something we can explore. We can take a look at that.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, so I don't, sorry.
Go ahead.
So, I don't have any questions specifically in regards to this. I feel like this is an opportunity. I was not on the Board when this first came to us. Just a little background, I'm a product of Merrill Elementary as well as Middle School. My grandparents, my parents were products of Merrill, and while I understand that we do have our long-range facility plan, I struggle with this decision in the fact that we oftentimes hear about, you know, transparency and how important our community input is to us, and as we, as Dr. Hess had just mentioned, we, there was, I believe it was either thirteen or fourteen hundred people that had signed a petition, myself included, that was against the tearing down of Merrill. And I just don't have it in me to be able to vote for this. I think that we, you know, when we talk about transparency and valuing our community members and community input, we actually need to do just that. And so, at the end of the night here, I will be voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hertzog?
Thank you. Just trying to collect my thoughts here. I was a history minor in high school, excuse me, in college. Did a lot of reading of historical novels and nonfiction, and still follow that on National Geographic and other channels. I have driven past Vell Phillips this spring when the track team was out practicing. I saw the large, I don't know the correct term, but the large rubber pit that the kids doing the high jump would land in, hopefully. And that was placed in the parking lot at Vell Phillips. That is not an ideal situation. I'm not sure what our insurance carrier would say about that, but it's not, I don't see that as a safe situation. I saw kids running on the hard surfaces of the sidewalks and the blacktop. That's not where they would conduct a meet, and it's really important that when kids are practicing and participating in athletics, that they have the same kind of facility that they would use in an actual sports event. I mean, we wouldn't think about shortening a football field and then expecting kids to play on a regulation-size field. At North High, we have a swimming pool, but it's not adequate for meets. So, I see this as an equity issue with the other middle schools, and as much as I respect those who feel passionate about this issue, I also know that the money was built into the budget, the referendum budget, to deconstruct Merrill Middle. I personally attended almost every community presentation prior to the passage of the referendum, either in person or if they were in a Zoom format, and the conversation led by Dr. Gunlock was typically that the plan eventually would be to take down Merrill School. I've seen aerial views of that region, it's very densely populated. Having more housing in that area, I think, would be problematic from a safety standpoint. And so, we also had a vote on a resolution in April to move in this direction. We had a vote recently to remove asbestos from this site. So, we have signed contracts. I'm not a lawyer, I don't know what that means from a legal standpoint, if we breach a contract, but I don't think that's a good thing to be doing as a school district. I did review the, at least some of the thirteen hundred signatures on the petition to save Merrill School. I know that some of those were out of town. I know that the referendum to create two north-side schools passed the voters by fifty-seven percent, and we had shared that information of the potential tearing down of the building, far more than the thirteen hundred who would like to see that saved. I also know that there are other facilities in the city that were designed by Mr. Oller, and I'm not aware of any conversations about tearing those down. I respect the work of Mr. Oller. I'm hoping that when we, after we signed this contract, and this came up at Facilities and Finance, that Mr. Nihans and Dr. Davis will be able to talk with H.M. Brandt in terms of what we could save from that building to honor his work and all the people who have taught in that building, who have attended that building, and for whom that has a special place. I get that. My own elementary school is now apartments. My middle school was torn down, and my high school was torn down. So, I know what that's like to lose sight of those buildings. But I think when we talk about students first as our guiding principle, the right thing to do today is to vote yes on this resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Wright?
We've discussed this in the past, and I've passed, and I've shared my opinion on this issue. Yesterday, when I went to Reed Elementary to see their new playground, the work that's been done there, that reinforced my decision. Because I drive past Vell Phillips right now, kids have no green space, right? They're in the parking lot or they're in the gym. And that's not, that's not fair to them. I think the time and place, whether, the time and place would have been for us to save Merrill before the referendum passed. I wasn't on the Board when the referendum got put together, but once the referendum passed, the way that it passed, we had a huge facility that was going to get built with virtually no green space, if we would have kept Merrill. And that's not fair to those kids. And we were put in a decision, we had to make a decision to choose between green space and for kids and an historic, saving part of a historic building. And that was an impossible decision, but I've said it before and I'll say it again, I'm going to choose, as hard as it is, I'm going to choose kids and green space. And the time that I spent at Reed Elementary yesterday, and the joy that those kids have, that they had while they had space to run around, interact with one another, and that reinforced my decision. So, I will be voting yes, obviously, on this resolution, and thanks for your time.
Was there anything?
No, I guess I'll just add real quick that, so yes, to Mr. Wright, I drove by Reed this morning as I dropped my son off at daycare, and there were still kids playing there, like a lot, which was really fun to see. It was seven-thirty in the morning, and there were kids on Reed's playground. Just adds to me how much the neighborhoods on the north side of this community need spaces for kids to gather, not just at school and at track meets. It's not just about that, it's about the whole neighborhood having a place for kids to play.
Very true. And I will be voting yes for it when we heard from Mrs. Kipmeyer tonight about extracurriculars. To me, that's very important, because if you can get a child in an extracurricular, that's one more chance for them to be excited about school, to meet people, to network. And I think that this opportunity, whether it's a track or not a track, it still provides additional opportunities for kids to be outside, and, boy, kids need spaces to be outside because there just aren't enough of them. Mrs. Carlin?
I don't really have anything new to add, except that I would just like to say that I appreciate the feedback that we've gotten from the community, and for me, at this point, it's about what was on the ballot when this referendum was approved. And I think we owe it to the voters that voted for that referendum to do what we said we were going to do. So, I will be also voting in favor of demolition. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Call the rule, please.
Wright?
Yes.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Duitt?
No.
Hertzog?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Amendment nine, number nine, resolution number nine, approval of wage increase of 4.12% for non-union groups, that's food service, paraprofessionals, superintendent administrators, and general exempt, non-exempt for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Motion? So moved.
So moved.
Carlin?
Duitt?
Duitt? Discussion?
And I'll just ask Sabrina, Drew, and Julie to come up just to support if there's So, just for context, for people that are present, for communities, the 4.12 represents the Consumer Price Index increase. That's dictated by the state of Wisconsin for collective bargaining, so that's the maximum amount that we can negotiate to. And so, that's why, that's why 4.12% comes up. That's an increase from the base wage from the previous year. So, that's what, that's what we're looking at as far as our proposals tonight for each one of the groups that we've negotiated with or met and conferred on, looking at that 4.12%. So, that's where we get that number.
Thank you for the clarification. Any questions? Dr. Hertzog?
Thank you, I do have one. I didn't see this until late this afternoon, so I apologize for not coming forward with this earlier, but in your staff report, under 3C, key communications, it reads, "The total package offered to all work groups holds 4.12% wage increase." If you click on "package," it's a two-pager, and the second page has just one entry, 639-113.36. I'm wondering if something is missing from that page.
No, it was, it was just not, that second page shouldn't have been included in that.
Okay, thank you. I was hoping you would say that, and it would be an easy answer.
It looks like it's the same number that's on a total for the 4.12% increase from the previous page.
Oh, okay, okay. Got it. Thank you.
For?
I've got a...
Dr. Hess?
Couple of comments here. Again, I think I'll echo what Ms. Duitt said, that we talk about being transparent, and I want to do that completely here. You know, in Resolution 12, we are considering cutting twenty staff positions, and that isn't an easy thing to look at doing. We looked at a large amount of data to evaluate the teachers' compensation, to come to the conclusion that we wanted to do a wage and step increase. I think we looked at a very large amount of data presented for the paraprofessionals to evaluate where we are going to be at in terms of starting wages. And so, there was, there was a lot of data that we looked at. We have three groups set up from the Board designated to meet with the different groups here to talk to things, talk about things, and I appreciate all of that. We have an administrator compensation committee, and that committee, as far as I could see on the district website, hasn't met since the spring of 2022. We have a policy that says that we are going to try to make sure that administrators are compensated competitively with comparable districts, and that we're going to review this annually. And I would suggest that at this point, I haven't seen any data to evaluate the administrator compensation portion of this. And so, if we're looking at cutting staff, I feel like we are obligated to look at everything. And I would suggest that, and I understand, I think in large respect, the argument is, we're given 4.12 across the board, and that is equal. I get that as an argument. However, if we're going to cut staff, I feel like we are obligated to look at everything. And so, I feel like before I could vote on something like this, I would want to see some data that justifies the administrators' compensation, the superintendent's compensation. And again, I'm not at all saying that, I don't know that anybody is overpaid or underpaid or anything like that, but I feel like I want to see that before I could approve this. And so, that being said, I'm going to propose an amendment to remove administrators and the superintendent from this resolution. And the idea would be that that would give us some time to come back and maybe at the July tenth Board meeting with some data before us, we could say, yes, this is reasonable. So, that's, that's my amendment that I would like to propose.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
And just to provide some clarity, so the proposal for the administrators and the superintendent is at 4.12%. That's the CPI, that's the...
That's the CPI, that's the amount that's, that's designated as part of the resolution.
That's what's... Right. And so, I would propose just removing, so we would be approving everyone else other than superintendents and administrators. And the hope would be that we could look at something to at least say, yeah, this is, this is a reasonable thing to do. It might be the case that we're paying those two groups too much, it might be the case that we're not paying them enough, I don't know, I haven't seen anything. And so, that's my struggle is, I just, I haven't seen anything in regards to this. So, I would like to see something to be able to say, yeah, this is reasonable, especially when we're looking at staff reductions in, in Resolution 12 here, so.
My comment would be is, I don't know how I can go any further with this, any of the resolutions this evening, because what happens if comparable administrative are making 6%? Doubt that they are, but if they are, then we're going to have to come back and cut even more positions. So, I don't know how we can look at a whole, if, Dr. Hess, I wish you could have asked for this information before so we could have come tonight with that information, because I don't know how we go forward with this.
I mean, I, my, my take is, all these other groups are something that either we have seen data on, or like the NTEA, I don't know that I've seen data, but I know that at least some board members have met with them and had some sense that this is reasonable. I just, I just haven't seen anything with this. And I, I, I too apologize that I didn't look at all of these and some of these until today. And I was like, well, wait a minute, why haven't I seen that? So, I apologize for that. But, at the same time, I think, all I'm asking is that we evaluate this, and, and maybe it is going to be a challenge to our business office to find the money to make either something more or something less happen. But, we're supposed to be looking at data, we have looked at a large amount of data for the teachers, for the paras. I just want to look at something before I approve this. And I personally don't feel like if we separate these two out, that we couldn't go ahead, that we, in that, that additional document, I think the superintendent and administrators are on the order of $200,000 is the 4.12 for that. So, in the grand scheme of things, when you're talking $134 million budget, to say that you're not going to be able to find $200,000 or save a few bucks, I don't feel like that impacts the rest of what we're proposing here tonight, so.
Ms. Wyman?
I have a couple of questions about this. Dr. Hess, my first question to you is, what would we accomplish by pulling out the superintendents and administrators? Why would we, we're saying that they're, they don't deserve the cost of living increase?
Absolutely not. I don't, I just don't know.
Don't know what?
I think they, well, one, a cost of living increase, when you say 4.12, and you're talking to a paraprofessional that's making 20 bucks an hour, that's not the same as 4.12 for an administrator that's making 150 bucks an hour.
16, 15.
So, I don't know, I just, I just want to look. I can't say definitively that 4.2 isn't reasonable, but at the same time, if I haven't, you know, we, we looked at Fond du Lac, we looked at, in the report for the teachers, it talks about how Fond du Lac is the major comparable. Well, why aren't we looking at our administrators compared to our comparable districts that we're comparing?
We have, we do have data on that from the past. And in fact, when we were hiring our most recent employees, Dr. Coleman and Anthony Miller, I guess my frustration right now in this request is that it's at the 11th hour, we're on a live meeting, none of the board members or the superintendent had any information that we could bring to the meeting and discuss this. And my other comment is, it's important to do that so that we can all be prepared at our meetings. So, I'm kind of with Ms. Wyman right now, I don't know where we go from here, if this is going to, we can't move forward with any of the resolutions if this is something that we want to go ahead and look at. So, I guess the next thing to do would be to call the vote, or?
Well, I do have actually a question. It was a little bit alarming to me in Dr. Hess's statement that, that the administration committee hasn't met since 2022. Why is that?
The compensation committee? Yes, we have, haven't we?
For the administrators?
Correct.
No, we've looked at, we've looked at the bands to make sure that we're competitive as we're moving forward with the consumer price index, to make sure that we are competitive. So, we do have, we do have that data. And if we'd like to get that group together, we certainly, certainly can...
Well, I guess I ask... Sorry. I guess I ask that because we have the OEA meetings, right? We have the OPEA meetings, we have the NTEA meetings that all have met. I mean, I, I just genuinely want to, I'm curious. I mean, I'm not trying to pin anybody or say anything bad, I mean, I think it's a valid question to ask.
I do too, and I wish it would have been asked before this evening. It's a very valid question.
I believe we have in the past, but I don't remember the context, so maybe one of the administrative team can help me. I think we've had a resolution in the past which had said wage increase up two, and then a number was filled in. Does anyone else remember that? Or it was up to something?
Yeah, and I think that would have been the, generally would have been the consumer price index, is what we, at least in my time here, that's what we, that's what we've worked through.
I don't disagree that everything should be looked at, and that we certainly should have that meeting, or that committee meeting regularly as well. And I can't speak to the exact work that has been done exactly, or hasn't been done exactly. However, we face some very important decisions tonight. And when I'm getting text messages from friends and from people in the community that are worried about what their next step is, I think that we need to band together as a board and move forward on these issues, because families and peoples and schools and teachers are depending on us to do that. And also, we've had hours and hours of meetings in this district, or I mean, as a board, between multiple different committees, where this question certainly could have been raised before tonight if it was going to impede us coming to a resolution. There is no question about that. Many people in this room have been involved in lots of discussions. So, those are my thoughts.
Dr. Hess, I was confused by one of the statements you made, I wonder if you could clarify that for me, please? I thought I heard you say something about some board members have met with, not sure if I got that quite right?
NTEA.
Oh, okay, so you were talking about the...
The three groups, right.
The union groups, okay.
And that was part of my problem, is I thought, I kind of thought we did those three first, and then having been assigned to the administrative compensation committee, I thought, okay, we deal with that first, and then, and then we come to the administrator compensation. And so, I was just thinking, gee, that's going to be the next step in this. And so, when I saw this, I was like, oh, wait a minute, I thought we were doing that. And I appreciate that, it's my fault. First year doing this, I, I messed it up. But, I also go, I think it's reasonable to look at data about compensation, and it's an important piece to being transparent when we're...
Absolutely. Mrs. Sallaji?
I, I actually appreciate this idea, and as a fellow member of the Facilities and Finance Committee who's leaving, I ask you to please follow up on that. I think that that is important work, to see if our administrators are, how they compare to the neighboring districts. I also recognize that what you're asking for number nine in this amendment change is, for essentially Reed, like number 15, which, when we get down to the step movements for these salary groups, I note that the superintendent and the administrators are absent. And so, at first, when you ask that, I think, okay, that makes sense, and then I sit back and think, and I don't know how number 12 through number 15 are going to land at the end of the night, I don't think any of us do right now. I don't know, maybe some of us have guesses, but I really don't know how 12 through 15 are going to land. And so, it makes me very hesitant to think that we would approve wage increases and potential step increases for everyone in the district except the superintendent and the administrators, because they are absent from the step movement. So, I feel like, I don't know, like I said in my gut, when you ask that, I'm like, yes, this makes sense, okay. But then, knowing if I walk out here tonight, knowing that every group gets a raise but that group, would just be really hard. So, I don't know, I guess I'm just pointing out that I'm conflicted on this. I think ultimately, what I feel though is, is that I do want that to be looked at, so if we could put that on a future agenda for the Facilities and Finance Committee, that would be great. And I don't feel like I can give raises to everyone at the end of the night except our administrators.
Yeah.
Because they're not included in number 15. I don't know, so.
Just, just to be clear, so the, the increases that are proposed would be the 4.12, and then it would be the, like, and it's different for different employee groups, the step movement or the extra would be the 13, 14, and 15 that's on the agenda. For administrators, we've given $1,000 as would, would kind of be the, that type of movement. They don't have a particular matrix, we've got a range for our administrators, so it behaves a little bit different, but that's what, that's what's not on there right now. So, I'd be happy to, if we wanted to explore with the administrators, happy to explore that option, I'm sure they would welcome that conversation. And, and we certainly, we've kept track, I mean, we, we know we're competitive with our administrators, so that data is, is clear. And so, you know, if we want to go down that route, we can certainly, we can certainly do that. Again, the, the budget impact to that would, would, again, increase, like, if we, if we're going to provide that, right, that, that would play into, you know, what we're looking at for other pieces of the budget. So, just, just so we're kind of seeing the whole field and how that, how that looks.
Yeah, so just to clarify, so the step movement for administrators is not, there's not a matrix?
Correct.
But, is it typically yearly that there's like a $1,000 boost?
Correct, yeah, to be able to keep people moving.
And is that decided in the administrative committee and voted on?
So, that's, that's been part of our conversation. Drew, do you want to talk, talk about that?
I'm trying then.
That's, that's been part of our...
I know we do our contracts in January, yeah.
Step, if you will, as we're moving forward.
Yeah, typically what has happened is the administrative group mirrors the, the other groups as best we can. Last year was a little bit different because the OEA, the teachers' group, settled for something different than the other groups. The other groups, we didn't do step movement for OPEA and NTA, they did a stipend as well as a lower CPI, which then administration mirrored them. So, we did the lower CPI increase and then a one-time stipend that doesn't carry to this year, this next fiscal year.
That's right, I do remember that now.
But typically, they would mirror, everyone mirrors each other.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have an amendment.
We got a vote on the amendment.
Can you read the amendment, please?
It was a motion to remove administrators and the superintendent from Resolution 9. We had first and second.
Okay.
I can appreciate the interest in having the ability to look at comparables, especially with someone new to the board, and I don't mean that in a, in any way, but a very positive learning opportunity mode. At the same time, if we don't include the superintendent and the administrators at this time, I'm wondering what message they receive if they are eliminated. Without a plan to come back, or to set a meeting date to look at that, and then, I believe under the, someone correct me if I'm wrong, under the, the Act 10 legislation, we are only obligated to offer the consumer price index. So, if it would come back that our administrators or a certain group is, is not comparable, then let's say they're 6% below where the, where the comparables are, do we really want to do that? I'm just, just raising those questions, but...
Again, I would say, I am not, I am not trying to not give administrators or the superintendent to raise.
Okay.
It is definitely the intent to, to come back. And if we saw that the other, that our administrators were 6% behind, you're right, we can only go up to 4.12, I believe. Or am I wrong?
The, the administrative group is not a union group. So, the CPI cap only applies to unionized organized groups. So, anyone that isn't, doesn't, that doesn't fall in.
So, I'm totally not trying to slight any group, any administrator, not at all. I'm just, at some point, I would anticipate, very soon, we would come back with, maybe it's the exact same thing, but it's just now with the administrators and the superintendent. It's not, I just don't know. And again, I apologize for the lateness of this.
Okay, let's call the roll, please.
On the motion to remove administrators and superintendent from Resolution 9, Wyman?
No.
Carlin?
No.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
No.
Hess?
Aye.
Sallaji?
No.
Wright?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so we're back to the original motion?
Yeah.
Can you read the motion, please?
Do you want me to read the Resolution 9?
Resolution 9, yes, please.
Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approved the wage increase of 4.12% for non-union groups, parenthetical food service, paraprofessionals, superintendent, administrators, and general exempt, non-exempt, and a parenthetical for the 2024-25 school year as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education. It was moved by Carlin, submitted by DeWitt.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this?
Nope.
Call the roll, please.
Carlin?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
Sallaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Resolution 10, approval agreement with non-teaching employees, NTEA, including base wages totaling 4.12 for the 24-25 school year.
So moved. Sallaji? Second.
Wright?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Call the roll?
DeWitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
Sallaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Resolution 11, approval of agreement with Oshkosh Education Association, including base wage, including 4.12% for the 24-25 school year.
So moved.
Second. Carlin and Sallaji.
Thank you.
Call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just had one comment that I wanted to make, and I know that, you know, teachers change the world one student at a time, and I know that this board is always supportive of teachers. And I know that if we had the funding, we would give them even more. And I have always said that I think I would like America to be like some of our Norwegian, or Norwegian countries, Sweden, Denmark, et cetera, where they pay teachers as much as they pay doctors and lawyers, because they think they're so invaluable to everything. Everybody has a teacher, nothing happens without teachers. And so, I just wanted, I just wanted to say that, that I wish we could give them more. I really do. You guys deserve a lot.
Mr. Wright?
I just want to add a comment. There's a lot of hard work that went into getting to this point. And the board, or our group, when we met, we, we came up significantly as far as teacher pay by doing 4.12 plus the step. Originally, the proposal was, I believe, 2.8 plus the step, which would equate it to 4.125. So, this agreement is... So this agreement is a lot higher than that, right? And we had a lot of tough discussions and we listened. And if my numbers are correct, Drew, over the last three years, how much have we increased teacher pay?
You put me on the spot.
Quite a bit, right? I'm a rough ball, like 15%.
In the neighborhood of 13 to 15%.
Between 13 to 15% in the last, the last three years, we've increased teacher pay. And to me, that's significant. One thing that kind of is a pet peeve of mine now, pet peeve of mine now, is when I'm out in public and people still talk about how Ashgosh is such a, you know, low-paying district. Well, the facts don't support that anymore. Ashgosh is now paying a competitive wage, and we're moving up into the upper range of districts in the area. And that is something that is going to allow us to attract more qualified people and to fill, we have what, probably 50 to 80 unfilled vacancies right now? We are going to be able to fill those tougher-to-fill jobs, I think, more easily. Before we vote on that, this, I just want to say, though, that in order for us to become a real high-paying district, sometimes some tough decisions have to make, be made. But we've made significant progress in pay. And we all need to celebrate that piece of this before we go to the next budget item or the next item on this agenda, which is a tougher piece. We can't lose track of all the progress that has been made because it has been a lot of progress. So, thank you.
I just would like to piggyback. Sorry, Mark. Go ahead.
I just wanted to give a shout out to the OEA head leaders, essentially. I commend you, I thank you for all of the hard work and hard discussions that were had. I also want to say thank you for letting me come in to this, to this group and really gain an understanding and a learning opportunity. And I just want to, you know, say thank you for, it's not easy to come in and have these tough decisions and tough discussions and really come out, hopefully, with a victory. So I just wanted to say thank you for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. I just wanted to refer to a couple of things in the staff report. Under section four, major points in this report, item D presents a comparison graph with Fond du Lac. And it notes that the Fond du Lac district has a student to staff ratio of 11.7 and that in the OASD, we have one teacher to 10 students. I'm pretty sure that if you ask any teacher in this room or in the other hundreds of classrooms throughout the district, they will tell you that they don't know where those 10-student classrooms are. And I had asked Drew about this at another meeting, and he noted that when you, when you figure those ratios, and correct me if I misrepresent this, it factors in anyone who has a title of teacher. So the tech coaches, the ISTs, the math coordinators, the math coaches, the literacy coaches, literacy teachers, they're all factored into determining that 1 to 10 ratio. So it's not just looking at classroom teachers who have an actual class in front of them. And I'm not putting down any group, I'm just saying that that's how that ratio is figured. So I think it's, it's important to recognize the support that this board has given to administration to hire those positions to help our teachers. There was one, one of the many emails that I received, as we all did, which talked about the elementary teacher load and the new math curriculum, the piloting of new literacy materials. There were at least four or five technology pieces that were mentioned that they had to learn, plus teaching of science and, science and social studies, excuse me. So to me, they were, they were expressing the value of those teachers who don't have classrooms, so the non-classroom people. So this board has been willing to support those positions, and I think that's, that says a lot about our district and the value we place on making sure that the teachers have the resources, whether they're material or human resources, to do their job. So I just wanted to point that out. And then in the health savings, there have been significant changes and improvements in my mind since I first joined the district as a central office administrator. There used to be different health plans for different employee groups. And now we have a unified health plan, and the deductibles are the same. And I believe, Mr. Nihans, you could speak to this better than I, but the deductibles have been lowered for...
Premiums lowered.
I'm sorry, the premiums, thank you. The premiums have been lowered for all employee groups. So those who are making 14, $15 an hour and those who are making significantly more than that have, have the same premium. So what I see in this one graph is that the employee per, I think it says month, annual premium, there's one column that shows $50 and one 100. Single is 50 and family is 100. Is that accurate?
Per month, correct.
Per month, okay.
Yeah, we went down to premiums prior to this, this school year. We're at a 10% cost share, which was down from the 12% we had when we were fully insured. But then we reduced those to 5% for a single and 4% for a family plan.
Okay. Which helps put money into people's pockets, where I'm trying to get. So, thank you. I'll stop there.
Okay. Thank you. Everything has been said. Call the roll.
Herzog?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
Selagi?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Okay. Next, we have approval of staffing reductions. Motion?
So moved.
Second. Carlin and Selagi.
Okay.
So I can provide just some initial context. So first of all, I think it's important to recognize tonight that all of our staff have positive impact on students and are valuable. So that's an important part to just, I think, start with tonight. I think as we are doing some analysis of this budget and our data with our comparables as part of the key communications, as we looked at that, again, and included that in the, in the staff report tonight, when we're looking at our instructional staff, so our per pupil ratio for our instructional staff is significantly higher than our peers. So as we're looking at, you know, possible reductions and to be able to be more in line with our peers, that's what drew us to the instructional staff aspect. And essentially, that's been a product of our declining enrollment, you know, which would be part of that equation, and our increase in staff and increasing in staff supporting kids in classrooms. So that equation then has created our per pupil imbalance, which is, again, why we're here tonight, to be able to take a look at the recommendations that were made by the executive team for the board's consideration as we're moving forward. So I just wanted to be able to point that out and then also just allow Julie and Sabrina and Drew just an opportunity to talk about just what the process was, to make sure that we're on the same page for how we got to this point tonight. So, Julie?
I can start. What was the process that we used to determine the specific positions? We've been engaged in a comprehensive process to right-size our staffing, and we are making progress. So if you recall from the last board meeting when we did the enrollment-driven staffing pieces and what that has looked like over three years, you are absolutely correct when you say that when a teacher looks out into their classroom, they do not see 10 children. They see the classroom ratios that we had set during staffing, and we've been, we've been working towards that. We were not, while we were not anticipating having to make this adjustment at this time, we prioritized all our impacted employees through this decision process, having a place to land in our district so that there would be no job loss occurred. So in those sessions that we were, that we are referring to, that was one of our prioritizations as well. So knowing this is a delicate balance, we recognize the impact that these decisions have on our employees, our broader, our broader school community, our kids. But it's necessary to step, it's a necessary step to maintain financial stability while also addressing longstanding issues when it comes to staffing structure and right-sizing it, so addressing that instructional staff to pupil ratio. So to achieve that 1.1 million, we needed to come up with what could we look at for staffing levels? So attempting to reduce the budget from other sources also felt irresponsible, thinking about that, because we are looking to look towards the salary matrix and adjusting and right-sizing through that. Reducing staffing was one of our most viable paths forward to maintain financial stability without compromising educational quality. And when we say that, like I say that with, we know that we hired every single one of our instructional support teachers and those other positions behind us because we saw, we saw a need and they provide valuable services. So we reviewed feedback from prior budget reductions and shift work that we have done over the past two years that was completed by administrators and other data points. We looked at positions based on impact on KPIs. And so there was a comment made about our tech integrators' impact or touch every single KPI. While that is true, we also know that our KPIs prioritized our reading, math, SCL, and then we also have our technology plan, which is a KPI. But when we talk about our three priority areas, we are always talking about reading, math, and SCL. And so as we went through those, we were looking at where could we make this move without impacting classroom ratios that have already been set and at the same time with the prioritized KPIs.
First of all, I want to thank everyone in this room that sent me an email. I think I replied to all of them except the past three that came in at 4:12 this afternoon, and I was out the door. So it really meant a lot. And I like that you forwarded them to all the board members because they got to have the same message. We feel that we, I understand, I won't speak for them, of what you're asking. And it's very, this is a really, really tough night because the biggest part is, we talk about our three priority areas, Julie just mentioned them, but if we don't have the support staff behind these three priority areas with all the behavioral issues, with everything else that goes on, how will that impact our KPIs for math and literacy? And that is a major concern of mine.
I have some questions. And it seems to be a theme tonight that I will apologize, that I did not ask them in advance. Usually as board members, we like to ask our questions in advance so that you can be prepared for them. I think we've all been just reading a lot of emails and busy focusing our attention there. So I'm hoping these are simple enough. One is, so the 21 teacher associates positions, we are cutting 11 of them, which means there will be 10 left. Can you tell me about, will those 10 be, I looked at the list, it looks like they'll be at like Reed, Phil Phillips, Winstill, Menominee, North, Franklin and West? Or is the plan to have them cover more schools? I don't know. If you can just help me envision what the 10 positions left will look like.
Absolutely. So what we did is, we had Adam Hawley in HR pull all of the information with regards to sub and sub fills within the buildings. With that information, we did place our teacher associates in buildings. But what our next plan is to do is to look at grouping or potting these teacher associates, to have a communication grouping between administrators to be able to lean on one another if that teacher associate is not needed in that specific building on that day. So yes, they have been given a building, but again, they're all district employees. So as they have currently, they support one another when maybe that sub isn't needed in the building on that day.
Okay. So a follow-up with that is, I wonder if we have seen an increase in our substitute teacher pool? I know that in my time on the board, we have increased substitute teacher pay significantly. So are we having better luck finding subs?
We are having much better luck finding subs. I know that when I first started with the district, we constantly were having conversations with regards to what is our fill rate? What's that percentage of fill? And that's not something that I've been hearing or seeing this year, and in our latest discussions have found that we're having better luck filling those long and short-term sub needs.
And then my other question, different topic, is in the staff report, key communications, A, we see that we spend significantly more on instructional staff per pupil than our peers. That's, we've talked about that, which is one of the reasons we need to right-size our staff. But I wonder if, shoot, my notes weren't going down to major points in this report, D, oh, no, wait, sorry. I need to read my notes better. Need to organize them better. When we make this adjustment, where will that put us? Because I see in D that it says we will continue to address this. So it sounds like even with the proposal to cut these positions, there is an assumption that we will still be at the top of per pupil spending per staff.
Correct. Right now, and the reason Fond du Lac was used as a, as a highlighted comparable instead of somebody else in the conference, is Fond du Lac is the next closest to us in ratio. Typically, if we as an executive team or the admin team are looking at a comparable, we more try to highlight Appleton. Appleton's a much better comparable for us than a Fond du Lac is. But they are the next closest in staffing ratio to us. So if we used what Fond du Lac staffing ratio is for instructional staff, it's a reduction of 132 staff members.
Yeah, I did see that in the report.
To get to their ratio.
So even with this reduction, we will still be significantly higher.
And again, that's something as, as we work on trying to do a slower, more planned-out strategic look on how we can start working our way towards that plan, no one has the thought or wants to try to get there like as quickly as possible.
Right.
But we need to start making progress to that. Otherwise, we will not be able to do full CPIs and steps in future years. It just, it's not sustainable with our staffing levels to think that we can compensate like our peers that don't have the same staff size as we do.
As we went through aligning our budget and staffing and resources pieces, we knew that going into next year, part of our staffing process was going to be to look at the formulas for instructional support, instructional support teachers to start to do that. Because what has been brought up in a lot of conversations is like, how are, how are teachers, how are schools, how are buildings going to pick up these things? Because we, we have staff members, we have dedicated teachers that are doing really important work, and we want to be, we want to be pre-planning that and what that looks like. And that does take planning as we move forward to do that and do it wisely.
I have one comment to start out. If, if the direction and the route we're going to go, and this direction and preferable route was voiced very loudly amongst many people, is CPI and step every year, then it's impossible for us to also keep the exact same amount of staff. Albeit, we have, no one's losing their job in this proposal.
Correct.
No one is. And I can't say enough about the work that, that these individuals have done. They've done a ton of work, good work in the district. But we can't have, we can't have both things. The original proposal that was put forth when we began negotiations was for no staff reductions, right? That was the original proposal put forward by administration. And, but in order for us to do full CPI and step, which is desired, you know, we have to change our model gradually.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. I just wanted to commend you for responding to the numerous emails that we all received. Many of you copied the entire board, which is great. In terms of board governance, it's usually the role of the board president to respond to those emails and to speak for the entire board. So I will admit, I did not respond to emails, but I read them, and I commend Mrs. Wyman and her efforts to represent the entire board with very individualized responses to each of the many emails. I also want to commend the administration for trying to solve a problem or a concern to provide increased compensation to all of our staff members, since that is included in our KPIs. I do believe also, we need to recognize that we are no longer a district of 10,000 students. We are a district of 9,100 students. And so there will need to be some staff reductions along the way. We've heard the term "rightsizing," and I think that's an important concept to keep in mind. I am concerned about what I perceive as a rushed decision, kind of the zero hour, here we are in June and the new academic year, fiscal year starts June 1st, which, excuse me, July 1st, which is next Monday. And I see a lot of unintended consequences of the proposed reductions. So I do a lot of thinking when I'm out dog walking, which I do regularly, or when I'm in the shower, which I also do regularly. I don't think that came out right. I'm really wrestling with this because I see many competing variables here. We want to put our students first, we want to keep the best people that we can in this district, and I will continue to say the same belief that I've held ever since I joined this district. We have some of the best teachers in the state of Wisconsin in this district and in this room. I've been in some of your classrooms, and I know that to be true. Mrs. Monigal, you would be one of them, and Mr. Callahan, you would be another. So I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Mrs. Caroline.
I have a couple of questions also. First of all, like everyone else, I'd like to thank everybody for their emails. And I do try and reply to most emails and just say, "Thank you. Thank you for your message." Because I don't think teachers know our policy, and I want them to know that I'm reading the emails. So thank you for your emails. I did have questions regarding placement of the employees, and we talked about, nobody is losing their job. Based on some of the feedback that we received, it did kind of seem that it kind of came out of left field for a few people, and it was a little bit of a shock. And I'm just wondering if there's a possibility that more time to explore their options within the district would help with placement and help employees feel like they have a little bit more say in where they're going to land? How do you feel about that?
Absolutely. Great question, and thank you for the opportunity to give some more information about some of the comments that were made in the process. So the first thing that we did do is look at seniority. In doing so, we looked at also the signed date of their contract, if they had the same seniority date. And that seniority date is within user group. And what I mean by that is, or employee group, my apologies. So when we look at tech integrators, deans, school social workers, counselors, they all fall in the teacher matrix. So when I say their seniority date by employee group, that's the date that we use, so when they became a teacher. After placing and making all the phone calls to individuals, knowing that we had a number of individuals to work through, that really, having the instruction to have everybody placed in time for this meeting, so that way everybody knew that they weren't losing their positions, that really necessitated the importance of continuing through the list in the process. Quickly after making all those phone calls, we did realize, after many questions and concerns, we did a much deeper dive, we looked again at seniority of those employee groups and realized that there was an error made on my part, and which necessitated us to continue those phone calls back after realizing that there was an error in the seniority that was used in the order that we made the phone calls. So I understand that it was a quick turnaround to get the information of where they were able to choose, but we didn't want to get to the point of today, this afternoon, and having to make the placement ourself, knowing that we wanted to have everybody placed before today's meeting.
That makes sense. And this is going to result in the savings of 1.1 million in staff reductions, correct? So let's say we didn't give Dr. Davis or the administrators a raise, that's not going to even come close to the reductions that we need.
Yeah.
I had another question, but I'm going to have to come back to it because I just went blank. Mrs. Whit.
Yeah, so I have a couple of different thoughts rolling through my head the last couple of days, based on the number of emails that we have received. And I just want to make my point clear that I understand, looking at the comparison of surrounding districts, that we are significantly overstaffed. And at some point, I understand that this is going to have to come. However, we heard several times tonight throughout the meeting how we value our teachers, how we value our staff, how we really, you know, appreciate them, and I have a hard time getting behind this at this time, based on a couple of different factors. I truly believe, and I'm probably alone on this, and that is okay, I truly believe that if we took a deep dive and looked thoroughly through our budget and looked at some of our spending or overspending, that we could find the funds to keep these positions. And again, while I understand that some of these positions, specifically the teacher associate positions, have been funded through the ESR funds, and the ESR funds are no longer available or coming in, I don't know where I'm going. I just look at this from a teacher standpoint and being put in their shoes and being new to, still sort of new to this board and learning, and learning all the ins and outs of the budget and understanding all of that, I can't help but look at and be in their shoes. First, we're told that the 4.12 is the max we can do, that is it, there's no wiggle room, there's nothing. And then we're told that the only way that this can happen is by eliminating these positions. And we talk about transparency, we talk about valuing our staff. And to me, that's going to make me question and really, maybe, I hate to say it, but lose some trust. And unfortunately, I can't support this.
Kelly, could you clarify what that means?
Yeah, and I just want to, if I could, I just want to make sure that we're clarifying. The 4.12% is the maximum that we can negotiate to? So that's the max?
So I forgot. Sure, the step, including the step, I should say.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that it's clear, that that is the maximum amount, and that's what the budget was set on moving forward. So there was complete transparency with everybody.
Sure, that was my error, I'm sorry.
In that space. No problem. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that.
And to clarify my point, I think that, again, we heard numerous times tonight, and I'm not trying to create any waves, I think that the community, as well as all of these teachers and support staff that are sitting here deserve, and maybe are itching to hear some hard truths. And I think that's what I'm offering. When you hear, "Value staff and value teachers," and we really, you know, support X, Y, and Z, but then come and the timing of it, I mean, we got emails from folks who were out at IST convention and received calls, they're at these conventions and they're receiving calls saying, "Hey, by the way, there's a possibility of losing, you know, your position being eliminated." I mean, again, I understand that we're, you know, looking at, at some point, this is going to happen, but unfortunately, the way that it was handled, the timing of it, I just at this time can't get behind it. So I will be voting no. Thank you.
I remembered my second question. So these positions are being eliminated, but the people that are in these positions, we want to keep. So we have offered them other positions that fit their needs. What are some of those positions? And if we're not, we're letting go of the position, but we're still, long-term, I guess, is the savings of 1.1 million.
So if I can go through that, that staff are given a list of the open, they were given a list of open positions that they could be placed in based on their current licensure and their seniority. And so that was the goal, to do that. And then once the staff member had indicated the position that they were interested from the list, starting with the most senior, the staff were placed in that position pending board approval to go from there. So everybody, it may not be, that's not the position that they signed up for, that they interviewed for, that they have been in, that they are working for, we understand that. At the same time, they do have a job, they do have a position in the Oshkosh area school district.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but weren't some of these positions empty that we are eliminating? We were going to hire another social worker, but now we're not at North, I think it was?
Correct. There's the open position at Oshkosh North for the social worker that is not going to be filled, and there is an open position for a school counselor at Menominee Elementary School that's not going to be filled.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. House.
This one, I've gone back and forth with too, and to be quite honest, I still don't know where I'm going to land on this. You know, I'm struggling a little bit with the characterization of this, that we need to do this so that we can give STEP. To believe that, I have to believe that there is no other place that we can possibly come up with the funds for this. And I just don't know that I believe that. I think Dr. Davis and Drew, we talked about last year's budget, where in April, we proposed some reductions, and one of the things was, I believe roughly, a $2.2 million reduction in the non-capital objects. And then in the fall, in November, we got more money and we put that back. And so I go, "Well, at some point, you thought it was going to be a sacrifice, but you thought that could happen." And so to me, that's a judgment call. You know, at the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting, we talked about the purchase of this parcel over at South Park Avenue. And I was surprised to hear that that was going to come out of Fund 10, so that's operating budget. We could not do that. Now, these are hard choices, but I suspect with a $137 million budget, if we challenge Drew to find it, I bet you we could find it. It's not going to be easy, but that's how I kind of feel about this. That said, I also appreciate the data. I appreciate the fact that our staffing ratio is way high relative to our comparables. And, you know, I think I said at a board meeting a month ago, this is a fiscal cliff, and we've got to address that. So I see the need to be able to do that. I think if we choose to go ahead and do that, I definitely believe that it is the administrators, Dr. Davis, and your team, you are the people that need to make the determination. We're not experts in this. And so in that respect, I absolutely trust you guys in terms of, hey, you're the ones that are supposed to pick this. I have some questions, given some of the things that I've heard about this. You know, I question, are we decimating a complete program? But that's a decision that I believe that is for you all to make. I think my struggle is that I believe, I get it, I get the argument of, we need, we don't need to, but if we cut 137 positions and nobody's suggesting that that's what we want to do, we would save $11.5 million, and that would make things easier moving forward. The problem that I have, though, is as I was driving here, I thought to myself, well, if Tony Evers gave us more money next year, if he gave us $11 million, where would I want to spend it? I would want to spend it on teachers, I think. That's where I'd want to do that. So that makes me feel like, gee, I know, I feel like we could come up with this, I feel like we could come up with 1.1 million. I feel like if I wanted to spend additional monies, I would spend it on teachers. But my struggle is that I know long-term, this is going to be a problem. And so what I'm left with is, if I vote no on this, I feel like this is just what's going to come up next year. And I'm left with, I'm not going to say to the superintendent and you all that you should pick something different. I feel like that's your choice. And so I don't want to cut positions, but at the same time, I see a need, and I feel like all that I would be doing at best is staving this off for one year, and I don't know that that's going to gain us anything. So I don't want to do it, but I feel like this is the right thing to do, so I am going to support this resolution.
Go ahead. I have a question.
You just, you brought up Governor Evers, and I just wanted, before all this was over, encourage everyone, especially everyone here tonight, to show up at the State Legislators' Committee Finance meetings. That's actually how I got started in politics. I had a six-month-old strapped to my chest, and a two-year-old on my hip, and a four-year-old and a six-year-old standing next to me. And I went, and I told them that in my, it's been six years as a state attorney, he had never received a STEP increase. He had only received CPI. He's almost 13 years in, and he's only received STEP increases, and this is true for all state attorneys, I think about three times. I believe, I mean, I could be mistaken, but I believe in the five years that I've been on the board, teachers have always received the STEP increase and the CPI. That's what my memory tells me. Could be romanticizing it, but I know that the best way to guarantee that this continues is to speak to the state legislators. They are the ones that give us the money. They're the ones that set the budget that we have to work with. So I would just encourage everyone to keep your political voices active and to keep coming to us and holding the school board accountable. I'm not trying to shift the blame onto the state legislators, but they also have the power of funding and spending. And so I just hope that you all show up there, too.
Thank you.
I have a question about the technology piece. How do we handle those reductions? From all the emails, it would appear that they have their hands full. So how do we make those reductions and still make it work?
Right. True statement that it's going to be a challenge. So thinking through this, we're going to need to collaborate with the two, with the two high school IST tech integrators to look at a different type of model for support for teachers and other instructional support teachers in strategic ways that's going to advance our initiatives. We also acknowledge that this is going to be challenging and not nearly at the current level that we have. We're examining methods to facilitate professional development that will result in long-term growth for both our teachers and our students. While integrating technology, these strategies are going to have to be in a development phase because we, you know, this has been a short timeframe. We will collaborate with other IST groups to incorporate technology, professional development into our comprehensive strategy for supporting teachers. We already acknowledge that there may be some overlaps, but we also acknowledge that there's going to be challenges and there's, when there's not dedicated coaching support in technology integration. And then right now, we still And then, right now, we still have professional development planning budgeted for, for over the summer, to set up so that we can be ready for the start of the school year.
The piece concerns me.
I agree.
Yeah.
A lot of the emails we received were about that piece in particular.
Yeah. What will happen if it just doesn't work with the number of technology coaches? What happens then?
As far as, like, day-to-day operations, those types of things, like, if this is approved, there's going to be some significant planning that we're going to have to do to figure out how to, how to make this work.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Do you mean, like, would some of them ever be brought back?
Yeah, I guess that's where...
Well, they're staying in the district, right? So...
We hope.
We hope. But if we decided...
That they will have other responsibilities, so, you know, it's...
I think similar to any reductions, right? I mean, like, that's, it's going to be a work in progress. It's not going to be certainly easy, because all of our staff are doing very valuable work. So, that's something that we're going to have to, we're going to have to work through as we move forward. So, I don't think there's a definitive, you know, answer to everything that needs to be picked up. I think that's something we're going to have to, you know, rally around and make sure it gets done.
Were each of the employees affected also offered comparable salaries to what they're currently making?
For the tech integrators, yes. They're in the teacher salary matrix, so they would stay within their same salary.
But then not the others, not like the teacher associates?
The teacher associates, five were able to be placed in teacher associate positions that were open. We had two who actually had certification as teachers. So after the tech integrators were placed, there were positions available that they did not choose, or weren't licensed for, that two of our teacher associates were placed in teacher positions. And then we had three individuals who chose paraprofessional positions, and those are at a lower hourly rate than what they're making as teacher associates.
I see some big challenges in terms of planning, and I respect Mrs. Conrad Peters, what you've shared in terms of the need for planning. We are in summer, we are about seven weeks away, I believe, before the new teacher orientation begins. Many people are not available during the summer for planning, so that's a concern that I have. There's been some history with the state university system, when they've granted, they've been granted raises by the state legislature, that in order to minimize the impact on budgets, they have delayed implementation of raises. So instead of starting with the fiscal year, they've sometimes delayed till second semester, January 1st. I'm not proposing that, but I'm just saying that that is a way to reduce the impact of these reductions. I do have, I do really wrestle with approving at this, what I perceive is the late date of reducing all of these positions. And the, as I said before, the unintended consequences that we've read about in many of the emails. So, but I also see this, it reminds me of my high school geometry class, where you had to have these, you had to write out these proofs, if A, then B, and then C, and so on. So, if I were not to support this resolution, then I'm not sure I could support the ones following that. Because, as board members, we have by law a fiscal responsibility and accountability responsibility, and to remove from administration one avenue to provide for the raises in the subsequent resolutions, we haven't left the administration with anything. So, or I could support this, but then, as I said, there've been a number of unintended consequences, and I've been uncomfortable with the notion that all this reduction would come on those who have teacher contracts. And I'm not saying that I value teachers more than any other employee in the district, I respect everyone, but I just wrestle with all these reductions coming from one employee group. So, that's where I'm at.
I have one final question that I just thought of. So we've talked about the student-to-teacher ratios, and I would just ask, and again, I won't be here to follow through and make sure this happens, but that we also look at the admin-to-student ratios and compare that with other districts?
Yeah, and we do have that. So, and we're on the lower end for that ratio compared to our peers, we can get that information.
I know we've actually looked at it as a board, I think it was probably about 18 months ago, and I remember that being lower, but it was when we added positions. So, if we could just keep monitoring that, I'd appreciate it.
That has been lower historically, probably going back 30 years, and while there have been administrators added over that period of time, those ratios are still not comparable. We're much higher typically.
I do remember that.
By higher, I mean we have fewer administrators.
Yes.
Than are comparable. So we're kind of flipped with Nina, I remember Nina being at the top, and kind of how they're at the bottom here.
I wish that I could just put on my personal hat and vote the way my personal being would vote, but I can't, because I was elected to sit here and make a decision for the district, and that's how I have to vote for not tonight, is for the district. And it sickens me. And I want you to know, I'm feeling for you, and sometimes I don't like wearing my school board hat, so, but I do, and I wear it with pride at all times. But it's not nice sometimes.
This is, we've got a lot of tough decisions on the board, and this one, I would say, has to be the toughest. Because of the value that's provided by each person in these positions. On top of that, though, we, we can't keep moving forward with, like we have been with salary and pay increases, to make us, our employees truly valued in that way either, if we don't make tough decisions. It's, that's just where it's at, you know? And, yeah, that's what makes this an incredibly tough deal.
Mrs. Carolyn?
I have often said that, more often than not, the hard decision is the right decision. And eliminating these positions is a very, very hard decision, but I also think it's the right decision. That said, I do want to acknowledge that perhaps it could have been delivered in a better way, had more time, more planning. I, I'm sorry for how it went down in some cases, but I also want to respect administrators' perspective of trying to get this ready for the meetings, we could vote on it, and vote on the raises, and the step increase, and everything, too. What is best for students? We need to be fiscally responsible, so like Ms. Wyman said, I'm not happy about it, but on paper, it looked like everybody, everybody's going to have a landing spot, nobody is losing their job. The positions are being eliminated, so it's going to be a huge shift, and it's going to be a lot of work, but it's the right thing to do. So, I will also be voting in favor. And I would also like to, thanks, Reina Johnson, for, I know this has been a really tough couple of weeks for you as well, and I appreciate everything that all three of you have done. Thank you.
Call the roll.
Hess.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Dewitt.
No.
Erzon.
No.
Resolution carries.
Number 13, approval of step-in-line movement for eligible professional educators, OEA, for a total increase of 855,146 for the 24-25 school year.
So moved. Second.
Selagi.
Almost forgot. Too enthusiastic.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Selagi.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Erzon.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Number 15, approval of step movement for eligible non-teaching employees, NTEA, for a total increase of $92,610 for the 24-25 school year.
Moved, so moved.
Selagi.
Selagi.
Selagi and Dewitt.
And Dewitt.
Discussion?
Call the roll.
Ray.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carolyn. Aye.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Erzon.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Request for future agenda items. About the compensation committee.
Our new position, have we determined a timeline for filling Ms. Selagi's seat? Okay.
Meeting on schedule for August 8th.
Oh yeah, that's right, I did see that, okay.
Any announcements? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Carolyn and Ray?
Yes.
Your last board meeting.
Aye.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Erzon.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Wyman. Aye.
Resolution carries. I don't do executive sessions.
No, we don't.
It's just a adjournment session.
Hey, you all need to help.
Yeah, we all woke up, we were like, what?
Save when you say so moved, because I'm leaving. Tell them I leave, who says it?
How's it happening?
Did everybody wake up on that one?
Yes, we all like, what?